Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is our normally scheduled January meeting. It's Tuesday, January 14th, 2014. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Jordan.
Here.
Obie. Henley.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Connery.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Okay, next of all, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'd like to welcome our newest member, Mike Ward, who's sitting to my left, which would be to your right. He was recently appointed by the City Council, so welcome aboard, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes from our December 10th meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Hanline.
I second with correction of the clerical omission, I think. Did we have, on the minutes, I don't know if we had all the attendees listed. On the minutes, we didn't have all the attendees listed on the minutes.
Okay.
Not that I'm hurt, it's just that I'm quoted further on down, and so, okay, okay.
All right, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved. Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. Now, I anticipate there'll be some public comment tonight, but if you're here to comment on one of the hearings tonight, then there'll be some time at that hearing, so this is if there's a public comment of a general nature someone would like to make to the Commission. All right, seeing none. Staff comments.
Thank you, Chairman, and Happy New Year to everybody. We are getting about a minute and 50 seconds every day now, so more daylight for everybody. We will be having a workshop on the 23rd for the proposed subdivision ordinance changes. That's for Planning Commission and City Council. I know Planning Commission, some of you guys attended that. It's your choice if you want to attend. For those of you who were not here, we'd love to have you. And that will be from 12 to 2 at the old council chambers. Next month, we will have two short plats. We have a subdivision, and we have a PUD in conjunction with the subdivision as well. Give me a second here. As another subdivision, so busy month next month.
Yeah, I think it's been years since we've had three subdivisions this early in the year, so that's a sign the economy's picking up a little bit here. Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have approval of the findings for PUD-1- no dash, 1-83M.3, ZZ-1-13, So my staff report says.
Chairman Jordan, you'll need to make an individual motion for each one of those items, and only the members who are here and participated in the hearing in December can vote on that motion. So by my count, it looks like there's three of you here that were here in December, so those would be the three folks that participate in the motion. And again, you need to make a motion individually for each of those three items.
So which three were here? We have Peter here, and you were gone.
Yeah, I was gone.
Rob was here.
So the chairman can vote?
Yes.
Very good.
Oh, I can vote, okay.
What's your motion?
In this case. Okay, so the first is PUD-1-83 dot 3.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on the procedure. In here, we, Planning, zoning, permitting, agreeing to, authorizing a property owner to remove trees on city property. And I'm not, my observations of the city and urban forestry and so forth, as tree removal off city property, and private property too, but city property, is a process that the council addresses. And I'm not speaking for or against the tree removal, I'm speaking about the process, whether it's proper for us to have it here, or whether that's under prerogative in the City Council.
Is that addressed to me or to legal counsel?
Whichever you prefer.
I'll pass it to legal counsel.
So as we discussed at our last meeting, the trees, the street trees in this location, since the PUD was initially approved back in the early 80s, the trees have been considered part of the PUD improvements. And while generically, you're correct that street tree removal is governed by the Urban Forestry Commission, in this case, it has been considered a part of the PUD improvements since the beginning of the PUD. So I do think it's appropriate for this body to rule on that element, and as was debated and discussed last meeting.
So we're looking for a motion on that one, PUD-183.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on PUD-1-83 to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous. Okay, then we have ZZ-1-13.
Move approval of CZ-113.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that's all three unanimous again. Then we got S2-03M.1.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a move to approve S.2.03M.1.
Second.
Motion by Hanline, second by Luttrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, all three of us again.
All right. We have one administrative item. The applicant is Gary and Emma Schmidt. Location is 261 feet of the southwest corner of Emma and Government Way, a proposed two-lot preliminary plat called Gary's Place, short plat, SS-1-14. Mr. Dobler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This, once again, is a fairly straightforward short plat, subdividing one lot into two. You've noted the location there in your preamble. The existing zoning is R8. The new lots conform to that. There is an existing home that will stay on one of the lots. The facilities and infrastructure are all in. The only requirement for infrastructure is that they would have to install a sanitary sewer and water lateral services to the new Lot 2. And then a condition for the location, potential location, future access on Lot 1, maintaining a distance of 10 feet from the alley. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Gordon. So a motion for approval?
I move so, so move. Short plat, SS-1-14.
Second.
Second by Hanline. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so SS-1-14 is unanimously approved. Thank you, sir.
There might be some confusion of people signing up on the notice, so you might want to remind people. Sign them in this way. And actually, we should all sign them in.
Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one, the applicant is Ann Wellborn, Fort Ground Homeowners Association. The location is the Fort Grounds neighborhood. And this is a request for a proposed R8 single-family special-use permit. This is quasi-judicial, SP-6-13. Now, let's see, the applicant, first we'll have a staff report, the applicant will come up and make their presentation, and then we'll take public testimony. And the public will each have up to five minutes if you want to testify and have some things to tell us, we'd like to hear it. And if some people ahead of you have said some of the same things you want to say, I guess maybe in the interest of time tonight, you can kind of keep it to the new points, but we want to hear what you have to say about this. And what you do is just go up to the podium here where Shaun is standing when we take public testimony, and then I'll swear you in, because it's quasi-judicial. And so we'll get started here. Shaun, go ahead with the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman. So, tonight, we have a request, as you stated, Brad, that Fort Ground Homeowners Association has requested that there be a special-use permit on 23.252 acres in the Fort Grounds This is the outline of that request, and that is for single-family detached residential homes only. Here is a map of those particular parcels, each one. There's 120 in total. You can see up here, it starts at the alley between Empire and River, and runs down south to the lake, and it's bound by Hubbard and Park. So the request stems from our code, specifically 1705090, where it lays out generally what an R8 zone is. The basis of the request is that you have to have at least 1 1/2 acres, and 66% of the people in that area must sign a petition, and it also must equal 66% of the total land area. So here are the numbers. As I had mentioned, there's the acreage, and that is greater than 1 1/2 acres. There's a total ownership parcels of 120 inside the subject property. So the hurdle rate, the threshold there, is 15.346 acres and a total of 79 people that needed to sign. And the actual percentages are below, there was 17.027 acres, which is 73% of that area, and the total ownership parcels of 90, which is 75%. So as I've stated before, as we've worked through special-use permits, and these are the three findings that must be made for a special-use permit to be granted and/or denied. And we'll move through the first ones, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So here's the comprehensive plan map. It falls within the historical heart area. That is denoted by this black line here. The purple color denotes that the area is stable established. The white boundary is the subject property, and the city limits is in red. Here is the stable established definition, which is in your staff report as well. In addition, I would also like to call out that in the staff report, so I can get it into the record here, there is what historical heart is today, and what historical heart is tomorrow, and that was there for everybody to read. It also falls within special areas, areas of Coeur d'Alene requiring unique planning Fort Grounds. And there are some policies and methods in there as well. I also include the special areas closing statement. In addition to that, there are significant comprehensive plan policies for consideration for you guys to mull over when you make your findings. All right, so the next one is the design and planning of the site compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. So as you can see here, this is a land use map, and the map is largely yellow. There is one mistake that I found here where this says that this is a duplex. That is actually a vacant piece of property with just a garage on it currently. It is pretty much all single-family, attached or detached, with the exception of a couple of duplexes. Here is a zoning map of the area. As you can see, the entire property is zoned R8, which is residential at eight units per gross acre. What that means is that you, for a single family, you would have to have 50 feet of frontage and 5,500 square feet of property. So this request would require that each home has its own lot that meets those minimum Moving on, here are some pictures of the subject area. I basically drove out there and went around the subject site, starting here at the alley between River and Empire, and took a picture facing down, and then moved counterclockwise through the area. So here's North Hubbard Alley, or North Hubbard Avenue, looking down from the alley towards the lake. And I see there, across the street, and further down at the intersection of Empire, and I see there, facing west, from Garden, and then looking into Garden, into the Fort Grounds area. And here is Woodland Drive from Hubbard Avenue, and once again, facing south towards the This is as you make the curve there, around the corner where it ties into West Lake Shore Drive, and then down Lake Shore Drive. All right, facing north, this is looking at North Forest Drive, the neighborhood, and City Park at the intersection of Lake Shore Drive and North Park. Looking north, from North Park Drive, here is City Park, a little farther north from the previous picture, the Fort Sherman Playground. Here is an interesting street that is pretty narrow. It's West Sherman Court, looking into the Fort Grounds area, and the intersection of Park Drive and West Mullen. Then as you round that corner, this is where Mullen Drive, Park Drive converge where Garden is at, and then Garden facing west. The final picture is the North Park Drive facing north to West Empire Avenue. So the third requirement here for us to take a look at in findings is the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. This is really a question about, can it be served by the utilities in the area? And it's been served by utilities for many, many decades. As you can see, the comments from our departments is that there's no comment or issue with the request. Here are those three findings that must be approved or denied, and there are no recommended conditions. There was 171 notices that were mailed on December 27th of 2013. You must consider this request, make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And that's attached to your guys' worksheet there. If you have any questions, I'm here for them.
Peter, go ahead.
We had a very good meeting today, given by Warren, on how these, on public hearings, etc. So if my question is out of order, I certainly defer it to the proper time. However, of staff, we had a matter of this, this matter like this before us a month or two ago, where the percentages were 75 or whatnot, and then they lowered it to this, that it was modified to what we have before us now. And that was precipitated, as I recall, by one property that the group down there felt was, should have been classified differently. And they could not bring that to our attention if they couldn't get this very high threshold of signatures. It was modified, now it's down to what we have here. I thought that was going to be on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but what we have here before us now is the entire district.
That's correct. So the change the City Council considered last month and approved and is now in effect was a change in the threshold, in the second threshold regarding the area of the property that had to be, you had to have consent for. That threshold is now 66%, in addition to having 66% of the ownership signing off on the request. That was the only change, and it's still an area-wide determination. You still have to have at least a 1 1/2 acre area. It has to be bounded by streets or other recognized boundaries. So this is essentially what council approved, was setting up this dynamic where a community representative could come forward, having met those two 66% thresholds, but it has to be for the entire area, within that 1 1/2 acre.
Not for individual lots, but for the entire area.
For the entire area.
So if I think that Lot A, boy, this fits in there, we can do it for that, but the rest of them, we can't. It's everything or nothing.
Yeah, the minimum area size is an acre and a half, so we have to have an area that is at least an acre and a half in size, and that's, so that's the area that they've drawn the box for, and that's the area for the request.
So it's either the whole area or nothing.
That's correct.
And what did you say about each property has to have its own lot?
Correct. With this special-use permit, if it is granted, that each, each single-family house will have to have its own separate lot with 50 foot of frontage and 5,500 square feet of frontage.
So now, what is the rule?
Right now? Right now, you, there is a number of different uses. You can take a look here. The R8 residential code, which allows permitted uses, principal uses, you can have duplex housing if you meet the requirements for that, essential service, neighborhood recreation, pocket residential development, and public recreation, single-family detached housing, as well as administrative offices.
So this will, if we approve this, it will be just single-family housing with detached garage?
For your principal uses, yes. There will still be the accessory uses that will be allowed, as well as any further special-use permits that come forward that are allowed in the R8 zone.
Is this 50-foot lot size, is that any change from what currently exists?
No, that is what currently exists in the R8 and R12.
Okay, anything else right now?
Excuse me? Excuse me? Can I speak, uh, what? Uh, have you been excluded from that area?
We can't take testimony from the floor. If you want to speak tonight, you have to wait until it's your turn to come up and be sworn in. We have a legal obligation to keep a verbatim transcribable record, and if you're not up here, we can't catch what you're saying, and so you have to wait until it's your turn and come up and ask your question at that point.
Okay, so that was it, right? All right. Thank you, Shaun. They have some questions for you later. Okay, so we'll start the public testimony. Now, if you'd like to testify tonight, and there's these signup sheets back there that you've been signing, and there's two hearings tonight, too, so be sure that you sign up for the one that you want to speak about. And I will check at the end to make sure we got everybody here. So we'll start these off here. First of all, I think this will be the applicant, Ann Melbourne, if you want to come up? Just state your name and address, then I'll swear you in briefly.
Ann Melbourne, 210 North Forest Drive, Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, Ann. And you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I am Ann Melbourne, I live in the Fort Grounds. I'm currently the president of the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association. We've passed out a map to you tonight to show you where the people who have properties are located, that we gathered the signatures from, the lots that are marked in pink are the property owners who signed in favor of requesting this overlay. To quote the Coeur d'Alene Comprehensive Plan, "Strong neighborhoods provide an opportunity for citizens to take a proactive role in the planning process and decide how their neighborhoods will move forward in the future. Coeur d'Alene's most desirable neighborhoods are a function of both physical and citizen organization and involvement. The Fort Grounds is considered a classic example of where both physical design and citizen action are present. It goes on to state, 'Careful planning in cooperation with the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association will be necessary to preserve this neighborhood's character and charm. Policy: We will preserve the Fort Grounds as a historic area, park, and campus,' unquote. The majority of the neighborhood has been registered in the National Register of Historic Places by the Department of the Interior. The document noted 55 contributing single-family homes built prior to 1950 to qualify us for this distinction. To date, 12 of these homes have been demolished or altered beyond their original designs. The Fort Grounds Homeowners Association was organized under Articles of Association in the mid-18, excuse me, 1980s. Its purpose was to consider and deal by all lawful means with common problems of the neighborhood residents. Homeownership in the Fort Grounds area qualifies you as a member of the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association." This brings us to where we are today. Homeowners are concerned about the changing character of the neighborhood and have experienced in the past several years. Original lots planted in the neighborhood had more stringent setback requirements than city code allows today. We have seen older homes demolished and replaced with larger homes built to the minimum city setbacks. They are often built to the maximum height with no regard to the views or privacy of their neighbors. The historic district of the neighborhood is quoted as being united by the height of the homes. 55 of the 80 buildings, at the time we became a historic district, were only 1 1/2 stories tall. Many owners are concerned about potential proliferation of multifamily dwellings on neighboring lots. In August of 2013, the Fort Grounds Homeowners Board called a special meeting to discuss several issues that would impact our neighborhood in the immediate future. The members voted to maintain the Fort Grounds as a single-family residential neighborhood and authorized the board to pursue a special-use permit designation through the city. Every property owner within the designated box was contacted and asked to sign the petition. The statement they were given is, "We, signed below, support implementation of a special-use permit by the City of Coeur d'Alene, limiting the Fort Grounds neighborhood to single-family dwellings. 75% of the ownership signed in favor, representing 73% of the subject property." A request to further restrict zoning in the Fort Grounds is not an option. Only eight of the current 120 parcels would meet the minimum square footage for R3 zoning, and fewer would meet the frontage requirements. We understand that this request does not change the zoning for the neighborhood. Uses other than single-family residences would require a special-use permit and give neighbors some input in the process. I have three other homeowners to follow me that will complete the rest of our presentation.
Okay. So that's it for now?
That's it for me, but they're part of my presentation. Catherine McLandris, Roger Snyder, and John Booning.
So I guess come on up in order, then. Then just state your name there, and I'll swear you in also.
So my name is Catherine McLandris, and my address is 315 North Forest Drive.
Okay, and you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay.
So I also want to make a comment that I, too, am a member of the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association, and I want to comment, too, many of my comments that I'm going to make tonight are in line with a letter that you should have received from Mark and Marlo Faulkner. And I bring that up just because they were instrumental in helping us to where we are tonight. So I want to reference the Comprehensive Plan again, in goal number three, where it says "home environment" in the second paragraph. The older established neighborhoods of Coeur d'Alene have a charm that makes them unique. To preserve this old neighborhood atmosphere within new neighborhoods, the city continues to refine standards and codes to influence local design. We believe that the proposed amendment of the Fort Grounds special-use permit reflects goal number three in the Comprehensive Plan. The plan also states that Coeur d'Alene is obligated to preserve the character and respect the history of the city as seen in the old neighborhoods while encouraging a diversity of design. of design in our new neighborhoods. On file with Warren Wilson in the Planning Department is a petition, with signatures reflecting ninety out of the one-hundred-and-twenty possible signatures, supported the petition request that the Fort Grounds remain a single-family neighborhood. We are requesting your support of our unique, single-family neighborhood, which we believe reflects the goal of the city's Comprehensive Plan, as well as the wishes of the overwhelming majority of the neighborhoods, neighbors, I'm sorry, in the Fort Grounds. I want to thank you for your time and your commitment to Coeur d'Alene and to the city's Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Okay.
I'm Roger Snyder. I live at three-nineteen Park Drive.
Okay, Roger. You swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, thanks.
Last night, I attended a workshop on the Four Corners area. From our front porch, I see the structures our city wants to preserve, such as Memorial Field and the stone arches leading into the park. Standing in the park, looking west, you see our home, which was built in 1910. You also see neighboring homes, which are mostly older homes as well. Over the years, countless people, many complete strangers, have expressed an appreciation for our home and the neighborhood and the older homes and the character of our neighborhood. Several years ago, out of the blue, a woman visited, visited our home and presented us with a photo album taken of our home, and it was her home when she was growing up, and these photos were taken in 1952. And the color of the house is different, but the essential architectural features of the home remain the same. Even though it's been remodeled, the features have been preserved, as many of the other homes have been. Another visit from a complete stranger came when a young NIC student who had been drawing, was in an art class and drew a chuckle drawing of our home, and presented us the drawing as a gift, and this is our home. But this is the thing. We can scrape this house, as the rules presently stand, and it may be financially tempting to do so. And as crazy as it sounds, it could pencil out for us and other homeowners to level these old homes and build something completely else entirely. I think these homes are worth protecting and add value, not only to the homeowners and to the neighborhood, but to the whole community. I ask for you, for your help in preserving our history in these older homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Bruning?
John Bruning, six-eighteen Military Drive.
Hey, John. Do you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my job here tonight as member of the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association is to address the policies of the Comprehensive Plan and why we feel that this proposal is in conformance with the provisions of the Comprehensive Plan. First of all, page thirty-nine, stable, established area. These areas and our area, the Fort Grounds, Fort Grounds area, is a part of the stable, established area. These areas are where the character of neighborhoods has been, has largely been established and in general should be maintained, and we feel to maintain this, the character of our neighborhood, it is important that this special use permit be granted. Historical heart today, page forty-two and forty-three, again, the Fort Grounds neighborhood is a part of the historical area. Plan states that numerous residential homes in this area are vintage, as we have heard, and residents are very active in local policymaking to ensure development is in scale with the neighborhoods. Our Homeowners Association is the oldest one in the city, the first one, and this is the oldest neighborhood, and we have been involved from day one, since we were organized, in ensuring development was orderly and to keep the character of the neighborhood intact. Historical heart tomorrow. Neighborhoods in this area, and those, meaning those in the historical area, are encouraged to form localized groups designed to retain and increase the qualities that make this area distinct. There again, we have done that with our area and part of that, our organization, and part of that is to ask for this special use permit tonight. Special areas, page thirty-two, and there are two pictures on this page, and both of those pictures are taken of the Fort Grounds neighborhood. Areas of Coeur d'Alene requiring unique planning. The Fort Grounds is considered a classic example of where both physical design and citizen action are present. I've discussed the citizen action, but the physical design, I want to mention that. When the area was laid out, and I think this was done deliberately, the streets are very narrow. They do not meet city standards. Some of those streets, as Military Drive, as I'm sure all of you are aware, is very narrow. Parts of military are twenty feet curb-to-curb, and the city standard is thirty-six. So, what that tells you is that what the designers of the neighborhood designed this, laid out these streets and designed them to be narrow, that they were intending that to be just a single-family neighborhood, not multifamily, not more compact and busier. They did, I think, design it for, for single-family homes based on the size and the narrowness and the way the streets meander through the neighborhood. During the next twenty-year planning period, this neighborhood will be impacted by extensive development along its borders to the north and east. Careful planning and cooperation with the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association will be necessary to preserve this neighborhood's character and charm, and I would add to that that, and this was not anticipated when this was written, but there would be internal threats as well to the integrity of the neighborhood, and that's what we're seeing now. Page seventeen, this is the, under the home environment. Protect and preserve existing neighborhoods from incompatible land uses and developments. Objective three-oh-six, protect the residential character of the neighborhood by allowing residential, commercial, industrial transition. Boundaries at alleyways or along backlines. And we would, we would propose to you that there should be no transition areas in this, from anything except a single-family home. We should not change it to anything else, just that. Again, on to page nineteen, there's a picture, and again, it's of the Fort Grounds neighborhood. Establish incentives and prescriptive ordinances to ensure the beauty, safety, and value of the neighborhoods. Now, we're not promoting any prescriptive ordinances here. What we are asking for is a special use permit so that if someone wants to build multifamily housing, we, the members of the neighborhood, be informed of it and be allowed to make our input to you, who would make that decision, whether that would be allowed, that special use would be allowed, or that multifamily housing would be allowed. That's all we're asking for, not, not to outlaw it. And on page thirty-seven, there is the closing statement on special areas, and I, I think this is a good closing for my, my comments as well. We are fortunate to live in a community with so many special areas. These are the assets that give a signature to our city, so it is important to plan for their improvement and protection as our area grows. From the green spaces of Tubbs Hill and McEwen Park, to the natural resources of the shorelines, hillsides, and aquifer, and on to the developed areas of the downtown core and Fort Grounds neighborhood, we have important elements to preserve. Our planning will help these areas thrive in concert with the deeply held values of our community.
Okay, thank you, John.
So, if you have any questions?
I do. Again, correct me if I should ask this a different time, but, John, you've had planning zoning for many years. If I, if I had to understand that if I owned a piece of property owners, and I wanted to put a duplex, a quadplex, whatever down there, if this is approved, I still could do that, I would just have to come before planning and zoning for a special use permit?
That's correct. It would be allowed, just like many other uses are, would be allowed, but you have to get a special use, and have to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right now, they do not have to come.
They do not.
But this way, so it doesn't, it just adds an additional step that the property owner might take.
Additional step and additional protection.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman Jordan, I want to address that, because I think you might get a lot of comments on this point tonight. So, looking at the provisions of the code, as Sean pointed out earlier, in the R eight zone, there's a list of allowed-by-right uses, there's a list of specially permitted uses, there's a list of accessory uses that are also allowed. What this action would do tonight would be to shorten the list of allowed-by-right uses down to one use, that being single-family detached housing. That would be the only use allowed by right. The uses that would still be open if an owner wanted to do something different than that would be those uses listed in the accessory uses and those uses listed as special use permit uses. So, accessory uses are, you've got accessory dwelling units, accessory buildings, that's, those are accessory uses. You have home occupation, that would be an accessory use, so you can still do those types of things. You can have any of the items listed in the special use permit items, you have to go through the special use permit process to get those uses. There was a question, I believe some folks have asked, about what about a bed and breakfast? Our code makes a distinction between what's called a homestay and a bed and breakfast. A homestay is an accessory use. That's essentially a bed and breakfast that occurs fairly nominally throughout the course of year, so it's not an ongoing day-in, day-out operation. It's a few times during the course of the year, you essentially rent out a room, essentially as a bed and breakfast. That's an accessory use, that's allowed, but you would not be able to have a full-blown bed and breakfast. So, those are the parameters that we're looking at.
Could not have a full-blown bed and breakfast without getting a special use permit through this, through the planning and zoning.
And again, and I'd have to look at this, I do not believe that that's listed.
My point is, it's not, it's, there's a process one can follow to get special use there, and that process comes, is coming before planning and zoning on an individual, item-by-item basis.
Yeah, for those, for those uses listed on the special use permit.
Or otherwise allowed in all residential zones, those would be the criteria.
Very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Sure, go ahead.
And this is, to both of you guys. In relationship to frontage, you mentioned fifty feet. What happens if someone, and I don't know what all the lot sizes are in the Fort Grounds, what happens if someone has a larger footprint compared to some of the smaller ones? In an R eight, they can probably do more units on that property. What about a lot that has a smaller footprint in an R eight? What restrictions are on there that they could not even do a duplex related to lot sizes and setbacks by building codes? Because I think there are a few lots down there that might be double lots or triple lots or, and smaller lots.
Correct. So, to answer your question in this regard, there are a few lots down there that are large, and they are set up that way as taxable parcels. So, if you look at the underlying lots that were actually platted there and that exist today, each one of those separate lots that are originally platted would still be allowed to have a, a home on them, even if they are large or small. So, there, there's not too many of them left, but there are a couple that the underlying lots still exist, and, and we would recognize that. Now, for lots that may be large enough to split, they would have to go through the subdivision process and ensure that, that they have the fifty-foot of frontage and fifty-five hundred square feet, and it would come forward to us either as a short plat, most likely as a short plat, because it would only be two lots or three tops. It wouldn't be a full-blown subdivision. As for the smaller lots, assuming that they were subdivided correctly with the, with the city's approval or done prior to the subdivision code, they, those would be grandfathered in, and those would be allowed to have the single-family uses on them. For example, there is a duplex on one of the lots right now, and the lot size is, is a hair over seven thousand square feet. It's okay if that, that exists into perpetuity, assuming that it doesn't get destroyed by more than fifty percent. If it gets destroyed by more than fifty percent, then the current code would kick in, and it would be, it would have to be rebuilt as a single-family. Does that answer your question?
And what about a larger home, regardless of the size of the lot, and they want to convert a single-family to a duplex? How does this play into all that?
That wouldn't happen.
Okay.
What about the, if you were to split the lot and build a house, is there a design criteria that has to be met?
There's no design criteria built into this. The only change, again, with this action is limiting the principal allowed use to single-family detached dwelling only. There's no design standards, there's none of, no historic preservation, none of that stuff is in here. It's simply a restriction of the allowed-by-right uses to single-family detached.
Warren, am I looking at something wrong in this list where it says duplex housing under single-family detached? Permitted by right?
I'm not following your question.
So, there's no duplex?
No duplex.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions right now? Okay. Okay, Tom Melborn, I have you as in favor and do not wish to testify. Correct? Come on down, Denny.
Good evening. Denny Davis, six-fifteen West Lake Shore Drive.
And, Denny, do you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Our home is located on the corner of West Lake Shore Drive and Military Drive, directly across the street from east of the property owned by Rick and Roxanne Gunther, where there's currently under construction, a four-unit townhome project. Fort Sherman, or Sherman Park Edition was platted in nineteen oh four. There are few, if any, restrictive covenants, and none that limit structures to single-family dwellings. There is no homeowners association created by the restrictive covenants. Consequently, the Fort Grounds Homeowners Association is not an organization that has any official representative capacity for property owners in the Sherman Park Edition. It is merely a neighborhood association, of which my wife and I have been members since, since it was formed, or shortly thereafter, when we moved to the Fort Grounds in the early eighties. One or more of the officers of the association have undertaken to circulate a petition to apply for the special use overlay application, really without calling or noticing a meeting property owners in the affected area expressly for the purpose of authorizing this application. There were, have been some meetings over the last summer that discussed the single-family desire to be only a single-family. However, no one ever sent out a notice, to my knowledge, we certainly didn't receive it, that says, "We are going to apply for this special use permit overlay. We need your approval or not." So, it's really not been vetted well, I think, by, by the neighborhood. These same folks also undertook to petition the city council recently to amend Section seventeen-point-oh-five-ninety of the city planning code. This, and this is the threshold percentage requirements section of the code, and the, and the section of the code that allows for this application. After, they failed to obtain the total number of property owners required by the city code to constitute a sponsor for this application. Consequently, there was no one that appeared at the recent city council meeting or your planning commission meeting, I guess it was here, here as well, to oppose the amendment of seventeen-oh-five-ninety to reduce the threshold number of property owner signatures representing the required land mass. The signatures being relied upon to qualify the petitioners as a sponsor under this application code section were collected under the prior version of that section, which imposed a threshold requirement of the owners of sixty-six percent of the lots and seventy-five percent of the land mass in the affected area. We have to object to the use of those signatures collected under rules which required a greater number of signatures in order to support this application tonight. It is inherently unfair to change the rules after the fact. unfair to change the rules after the fact, especially when done so without notice to those opposed to the measure. Now, the proponents of this measure have emphasized that this does not change the R8 zoning. And I'm, I'm glad to hear the clarification of staff because, quite frankly, there's a certain amount of confusion out there as to whether or not this absolutely prohibits anything other than single-family, or whether, or whether it allows it as a special use permitted use. And the code section's unclear about that. The notice that went out certainly seemed to imply that it was an absolute ban. So I want to leave here tonight knowing what it is, and I'm assuming for purposes of my testimony, that it would move anything other than a single-family detached dwelling, i.e. anything multifamily, would be moved into the special use category, obtainable by special use permit. If I'm wrong, I need to be corrected on that point. So assuming that, I wanted to say that, either way, this is a material deprivation of a right of a property owner that has, has existed since the existence of the subdivision over 100 years ago. So it, to say that it doesn't change the zoning is a bit of an understatement. It does change the effective use to which you can put your property with, as a matter of right in this area if this were approved tonight. So as a former member of your commission and as an attorney, I've represented a number of applicants. I know that these special use permit applications can be very expensive and time-consuming. This is a material change in one's right to utilize their property, should not be imposed, in my view, absent a demonstrable harm to the community and the surrounding properties, and we simply do not see that harm. If a single-family restriction requirement were to be made part of the restrictive covenants, for instance, it would require unanimous consent of all property owners. The project which spawned this application is a four-unit townhome being constructed next to our property in West Lake Shore Drive. It's hard to imagine what conditions would have been imposed upon the Gunther's four-unit townhome project by special use permit. They are required to, and I'm providing off-street parking to meet city requirements. The foreground is a restricted on-street parking district, allowing on-street parking by permit only. Two buildings, the two buildings being constructed at this site are hardly distinguishable from a half a dozen or more so, what I call McMansions, that have been constructed right to the setback lines, and in a case of two remodels on Military Drive, those two buildings are separated by just a few feet. This measure does nothing to prevent the construction of these overbuilt, single-family residents in our neighborhood. Neither does this zoning overlay do anything to protect the historic architectural value of foregrounds residents such as ours, which was built in 1908. I note that the Sherman Park Edition can be found since about 1992 on the National Register of Historic Places as having the following characteristics. Its historic function is designated as domestic. Its historic sub-function is designated as multiple dwelling and single dwelling. Its current sub-function is designated as hotel, multiple dwelling, and single dwelling. We have no intention of ever replacing our 1908 home. However, this effort has never felt fair and right to us. It has divided our neighborhood and was never fully vetted. We suggest and ask that you deny the application tonight. If there remains interest in imposing this overlay, then we urge association's officers to convene a workshop meeting of affected homeowners and to, and ask the city planning staff to conduct that workshop. Maybe there's a compromise somewhere in all of this. You don't have an easy job, I understand that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denny. Warren, I assume those assumptions Mr. Davis was making, do you concur with those?
So, as I said a moment ago, I think what's allowed, if this passes, what you get for an allowed use, for allowed by right, is single-family detached only. You then are left with the uses that are listed in the accessory uses and the uses that are listed under special use permit. Those are the uses that are allowed. There is a couple of uses that are talked about as accessory uses elsewhere in the code, and those being allowed in all residential districts, those would still be allowed. Those are the, in my read of the code, those are what's allowed if this passes tonight. So my read is a duplex would not be allowed via special use permit if this were to pass tonight.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, Mr. Davis, if possible. You, Mr. Davis, I have a question. Based on, you'd sent us a letter.
I'm sorry?
You sent us a letter, and I'm quoting part of it. "I am all for the single-family designation except-"
That's not my letter.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I looked at the first name, my, my apologies.
Steve McCray. Which map are you looking for?
Do you have a pointer? The one that has the subdivision?
The parcels?
That one.
This one?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, you can use this as a pointer.
Oh.
It'll come back.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Name and address.
Steve McCray, 807 West Lake Shore Drive.
And do you swear you'll, you'll tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, Steve.
First of all, I think this is a bit of a solution in search of a problem. We've made great, maybe making a mountain out of a molehill here. I think Mr. Chairman Messina's comments were very perceptive. Let me give you a little history here. Where's the pointer? Okay. In 19, just around 1904, this whole area was Fort Sherman, and it was sold. And some gentleman named Thomas Curlin, John Hamm, I believe, bought this area, and so this is not the entirety of the area in question, but this area south of Garden is the Sherman Park subdivision. So, and right in here was the parade grounds. In here was where the commanding officer's quarters were. The Sherman Park Company divided this parade ground into 99 lots, and it left out this section here, where was the parade ground. That was only three lots. And that continued, that was in 1905. That continued until 1950, when Charlie Finch, who owned this whole area, further subdivided this area into 12 lots. The point being, from 1905, there's been a continued increase in density here. And most of these lots, as you can see, are 55 feet in width. So this special use, request for a special use permit really only affects a very few lots because the size of the lot simply isn't enough to put any type of multiple-family housing on. Even though, I can tell you that many houses here have apartments, and whether they're authorized under the accessory use regulations, or whether they were just put there prior to those regulations, regardless, there are many parcels that have apartments. Whether they're mother-in-law apartments, or whether they're rented out on a regular basis, I can't, I can't testify to. And you can also see that some of the, some of these 55-foot lots have been joined into larger parcels. And so, Mr. Snyder, who testified, my good friend Roger, his parcel is, I think, this one here, and it was originally a couple of lots. And so, really, those are the people who have concerns. My lot is here, it's 55 feet. My house was built in 1980. I've lived there ever since 1980. So I'm a newcomer to the neighborhood in terms of the historic part of it, because that was started in 1905. And so, the, the problem that I see, if there is a problem, is that ever since I was on the council and, and throughout, the city has resisted expanding the city limits of the city beyond the city of area of impact. We want to concentrate the growth within the confines of the existing area. And in order to do that, the Comprehensive Plan talks about increasing pedestrian access, discouraging sprawl, increasing the efficiency of the existing infrastructure, creating a diversity of housing to match the needs of a changing population, protecting neighborhoods from incompatible land uses, protection of historic buildings and sites. And the National Register itself talks about Sherman Park as historically multiple and single-family dwellings. And so, all of these provisions in the plans speak to sustainability, efficiency, and discouragement of sprawl. And so, at the same time, you have the code that says, "But the citizens in our neighborhood can come forward and say," except for our area, "We don't want to encourage multiple-family housing. We want to leave our neighborhood alone, not in our backyard, but for the rest of the city, it's good." This is a problem that you guys have, and that the city council has, because I see this provision of the code as being directly in conflict with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan, which is to increase this diversity of housing, diversity of situations, increase the density of the area, so people can walk from the foregrounds. As many people as can live there can walk to the foregrounds downtown, can access the beaches, can access Tubbs Hill. Is it a huge issue? I don't really think so, because so few lots are really affected by this. I like all our neighbors, everybody here I like, every single one of them. They're great people. We, we love having this community association, everybody talking about different viewpoints. But it is perceived as being a downzone. It is perceived, perceived as being another layer of government regulation, which not, which is not really necessary, and it's, it's an attempt to regulate charm, character of a neighborhood, and I think that's a really difficult area to get into for you guys as a planning commission. I'm not affected by this particularly, but it's an issue that, that needs to be addressed in this conflict itself within the code, where a neighborhood can say, "I don't want to be part of the Comprehensive Plan. I want the charm of my neighborhood, but I don't want to be dealt with, with this efficient housing idea and multiple different types of housing in the neighborhood." Does it really affect anybody if you have single wall construction or two little houses next to each other? Really? I don't think so. I don't really think it's a problem. I hope you consider, however you wish to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Now, I understand you applauding. Steve had some good points, but the other people up here have had good points too, so I'd appreciate if you could hold the applause down, because if everyone starts applauding for each other, this is going to drag on tonight. So I appreciate that, if you can do that. Okay, Ken Murphy, you're in favor but don't wish to testify?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's see. Ginger Flynn, don't have whether you'd like to testify or not? No? Okay, have you in opposition, don't wish to testify? Catherine Dolan, in favor, don't wish to testify? Greg Gillespie, have you in favor, would you like to testify?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay.
You can testify if you'd like.
He's dragging me into it.
Okay, just state, state your name and address up there for the record.
Greg Gillespie, 315 Park Drive.
Okay, Greg, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, and I'll try and keep it short.
Okay.
I noticed a lot of realtors here, or, or some, and you may hear in the course of the night about how knocking down a house and building something else can make money for the neighborhood, for blah, 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 whatever. The only thing I want to say is that, a couple, a couple of years ago, I guess it was in the height of the realty boom, I'm sitting on the front porch, and a guy comes up to me, and, you know, I've got this old house built in 1910, too, and I, I've done a little bit of work on it, but, you know, nothing a whole lot. And he comes up to me and says, "This is a really nice house. Would you like to sell it?" And I say, "Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't think so." And he says, "A million dollars, will, will, will that enable me to buy your house?" I don't, I don't mean to be bragging or anything, because I'm certainly not. I told him that I wouldn't sell it for $10 million. I, I love the area, I love the house. It's an old house leaning over to one side, but you can't beat the old-house character in the neighborhood. If you start knocking down these old houses, which has happened, these small little houses and big monster houses that I don't see any historic value to, I think it changes the whole atmosphere of the neighborhood. I personally would like to see it stay historic. I would like to see more homes remodeled, but keeping the outside intact. Don't, don't expand the footprint that was built there. Just deal with what you have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think if they offered 10 million, it might have got me thinking, but I-
Did you live there?
I appreciate your comments. Okay, let's see here. Let's see, is that Dennis Pence? Have you in favor, do not wish to testify? Correct? Sally Spencer, you in favor, did you want to testify? Okay. Randy Bell?
My, my wife is going to testify.
And I assume she's signed up somewhere here, so I'll, I'll find her later. Okay, all right. I can't quite make the last name out, but it's Joan Anita at 180 Forest. Okay, you're neutral, don't wish to testify. All right. Jim Addis.
Okay, Jim, just state your name and address. My name is Jim Addis, and I live at 207 Military Drive.
Okay, Jim, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I am not in favor of this overlay, and I'm going to try to be succinct on why. I do not know who else is going to be testifying against it, but I do want to mention, because they might mention, the fact that since the signatures were collected, a great many people that I know and have certain knowledge of have complained that what was told to them in zeal, and I understand the passion, is not exactly what they thought was, they were signing. So they have rescinded their signature, and they have sent letters that says, "We do not want to be on this petition." And given what Denny mentioned about the fact that this measure failed first, and without letting me know, and I love Tom and Ann Melbourne, and I've been good friends with the Falkners, I live right next to them, I did not know that they were going to come and seek the special use permit. It was very clear their desires when they were sending out petitions, and we chose not to sign that. So I think it needs to be noted that we have, hopefully, people that will testify to this, that they, A, wanted their name off of the petition, B, the game was changed, and I think there should be a new petition if this is to go forward. Quite simply, again, I really like all my neighbors, like Steve was saying. I come at it from a little bit different issue, or from my perspective. Tom and Ann, I first met Tom when he was working for the county, and they were looking at a piece of property that I was kind of looking at, and he bought it, and it had, it was in that area that had a real deep ditch and had some historical perspective, and they bought it and they filled that ditch in. And maybe that was historic character of the neighborhood, I don't know. I applaud them. That's their private property right to be able to fill that in, okay? They built a beautiful, large home. I think it's- They built a beautiful, large home, I think it's gorgeous, okay? But they also went 32 feet high, we've had testimony about preserving the height in the neighborhood, and what prospective people might do, absent this overlay, they went ahead and did it, and I think they did a great job. Faulkners, I think it's a beautiful home, it's that shingled home next, down there on the park. Their next door neighbor to the north, Schreiber's, have a nice, big white house, and I was having martinis with Mark and Marlo in their backyard, and they were telling me the story of how they built up. And when they built up their house, historic house, they blocked the view of the Schreiber's, and they mentioned to me that Schreiber's weren't very happy, and they didn't speak for a couple of years. I think that's not good, but at the same token, that's their private property, that's their right to do with their property, as they see fit. And, again, I like everyone, but I think it's, there's something wrong when a person can improve their property, that they paid for, and want to do it, and then not to be cliche, you know, bring the drawbridge up and fill the moat with water, and not then allow other people, who bought under the same zoning, and have the same property, to have that right to do so too. You transfer that to me, I'm at 207 Military, I share a back fence with the Melbourne's, very good neighbors, to my south is Amy Hugh, another very good neighbor, she bought a motorhome, she was going to travel the country, and she decided not to, she changed her mind. So she's parked that mobile home, in front of our living room window, on the other side of the fence, that I look at every day. It's probably a very nice motorhome, it's not great to look at, but you know what? My choices are to buy her property, my choices are to buy her motorhome and hopefully sell it, my choice is to sell my house and/or move, because she is living to her private property right. And as an adult, and as a competent adult, when I signed my title documents, when I signed on the line for my house, which almost everyone in this audience did, that was the law, and that was the code, and that was no restriction, that's my responsibility, okay? To come here, in my opinion, and try to change that right, is like moving next to a railroad track, and complaining about train noise, I just feel that in my heart, no ill will to anyone, but this is my private property right. And if I am told what I can or can't do, and Mr. Bruning, he is asking for the right for an extra step, that extra step is huge. The people who are not, who are in favor of this, are adamant against somebody putting a paired home, a nice quality paired home, or a triplex, or what have you, on four to six lots in the foregrounds, and I understand that. So when you have a special permit request comes up, I understand, and I know where their sentiment's going to be, and I respect that, but it is taking away my right, as a taxpayer, as a property owner, who's trying to grow and succeed, if I choose to do something with my property. I don't have that, I don't have a plan to do so, but I think it's a fundamental right that we should be able to keep, and I urge you to vote no. If not, no, let's get the new signature signed, so we can see what's really going on with the population down the foregrounds. Thank you very much.
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold on Jim, we have a question for you.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, I got a question. Is there any design criteria in the foregrounds, within the homeowners' association, or anything?
To my knowledge, no, in this, okay, now we're going to get philosophical, theoretical, but this is theoretical. So, let's say, I wanted to move next to Mark and Marlo, and I wanted to build a blockhouse, in concrete block, and I met all the setbacks, I met all the code, I did it, I could do that, if they pass their, if this passes, but I couldn't put together a beautiful, tasteful paired home, that looks like a vintage old craftsman-style home, that has parking off the street, that I might make some extra money on, it might be my exit plan for life, I can't afford a home, I can't afford to go anywhere else, that would preclude that, and I find a problem with that. So again, there's no design criteria, if there was, I wouldn't have a house here, because I'm the only brick-century modern rancher in the foregrounds, with painted brick, I mean, that's the way that is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got another question for you. On the petitions, and the data that's on these documents, does it represent his testimony? So that the, all the petitions that were signed, and...
They were rescinded, certain petitions were rescinded, after they, people figured out what was going on, and letters were sent to the city, and there was some anger in the neighborhood, and that's, but they may be testifying to that.
Okay, so is it, correct me if I'm asking the wrong question, so this document we were handed said that, of the 120, I'm sorry, 80, pink equals approved, 80 plus, 80 lots sign this, I guess my question is, everything that's pink was for the petition, is that correct? Is that what I heard earlier?
I can't vouch for this, this isn't our exhibit, I think Sean has in his staff report the breakdown of the percentages, so in the staff report is where you would find the staff's analysis. I will say that we did receive, how many? We received a few, not many, I think one or two, and those were taken out of our calculation, and so, this should reflect the final tally.
Okay.
They did cross that threshold, for us, it was a threshold determination, it wasn't, you know, if you're 10 or over, or you're 1 over, you're over, and as long as they're taking them out, at the time we counted the threshold, it didn't drop you below that threshold, as long as you met the threshold, we were okay with that, that's the point that we were concerned with, did you reach the threshold, or not?
I would also add to that, that the game changed in the middle of this whole process. Signatures were collected at a certain time prior, then it didn't meet the law at that time, so then they went and changed the law, but we haven't had to go out and get more signatures again. Now that we have more commentary, and a full disclosure of all what can and can't be done, is something that I don't think happened. And again, the game was changed, after the first round was lost, and I just find that unique.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Let me speak to that really quick, while you're calling up the next person.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, Warren.
So, at the time the signatures were collected, the question that was posed to the folks signing the petition was, are you in favor of a restriction to single-family use only? There's no reference to the percentages that you have to meet, it was simply a, you know, yes or no question, are you in favor of a restriction to single-family use only? The percentage threshold doesn't enter into that question, whether you're in favor of it or not, really doesn't depend on what the percentages are. So, when this issue came up, what we looked at was, is the question still valid? And the answer is yes, the question is still valid before and after the code change, and also, and we look at this when we're dealing with title reports and address lists, if we have to renotice a hearing, how recent were those, how recently were those signatures, or those names collected? Because at some point, with any title report, any list of names, you start to get stale names and stale addresses, because people move and things change. So, if it's typically collected within the last few months, we will say that that's still a valid list, we'll still rely on it, because it was collected within the past couple of months, and because the question didn't change, being, are you in favor or not, of a single-family restriction, we said that you've met the threshold, and I still think that that's an appropriate approach to this process.
So those are the original petitions?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a question for Warren, based on this. I know we had a hearing, a few months ago, in November, I believe, where a representative of the foreground came to us, and we approved the amount of numbers of property owners and such, it went to City Council, and I believe it got approved?
Yes.
Okay, how does that affect this, or is that completely different? Because I see numbers in front of me, I've read the little narrative here that says basis of request, and I'm trying to understand that.
So, prior to the code change that the council approved in December, the threshold was 66 and 75.
Okay.
Now the threshold is 66 and 66.
Because of what, we approved and City Council approved?
Yes, that's correct, that's set up tonight.
Okay.
If that hadn't been approved, you wouldn't be here tonight.
And how does this affect the requests we're looking at, at all, today? Does that have anything to do with...
What you're looking at tonight, what you're basing your decision on tonight, is essentially the requirements in our code for approving a special use permit, and the evidence you received tonight. The change in threshold has nothing to do with tonight, you're applying the existing law as it exists today.
So someone, if this passes, and someone wanted to put a single, a duplex, on a piece of property that meets the setbacks, or whatever, they would have to come to us and get a special use permit, but they don't have to go through a process of getting a certain percentage of neighbors to say, yes, they can or can't get a special use permit?
So, if, in the future, if, assuming this passes, if somebody wanted to put a duplex in the foregrounds, in the box that's been described, they would not be allowed to do that?
I understand that. Okay, it's, without a special, if this approves, they cannot do it?
So, what they would have to do is frankly, get a code change, to allow it, that would have to be a change in the code to authorize that use, or the entirety of the special use permit would have to be essentially removed, so they'd have to go back through the same process to remove this restriction.
And if this is not approved, and someone wants to put a duplex up, can they do that?
Assuming that they meet the other requirements of the zoning code and the city's subdivision codes, that would be okay.
Okay. Did you get that?
I thought, I heard you say that if this passes, people can get a duplex, if they apply for a special use permit.
No, what I said was, what uses you have, assuming this passes, you have as the sole use allowed by right, single-family detached dwellings. Then what you have is all of the list of accessory uses, and then you have the list in the code of specially permitted uses. Duplex housing is not one of the specially allowed uses in this zone.
Well, I misunderstood, thank you.
I guess I'm reading the list wrong, where it looked like it said duplex was allowed.
That's in the allowed by right list, so that list gets pared down to simply, single-family detached.
Okay, because they've pared it down on the special use permit, so it isn't a standard R8.
Mr. Chair, what page are you on?
Me?
Yeah, this is our packet.
It says page four.
Where's that special use though?
Well, I was on page four, I'm not sure what page you're talking about.
We don't have in front of us a list of...
Page of the list that is, can be done, and cannot be done.
We don't have that in front of us.
I was looking at the R8 list, not the special use list.
So, the code in question is 1705100, permitted uses principal in the R8 zone, it lists a number of allowed by right uses, one of which is duplex housing. So that list gets pared down, it looks like there's half a dozen uses there, the resulting allowed by right list is now, would be one use, single-family detached.
That's by right.
By right.
And we have a process special use, that can bypass that in some occasions?
You do, for the uses that are allowed by special use permit.
And this, and duplexes is not...
Duplex is not a specially, special use permitted use.
Can we make it one?
Again, with the code change, that's...
All right, why don't we do some more testimony here? I think this, I think this is Rick, let's see, is it 701 West Lakeshore?
Gunther.
Oh, oh, she says Rick. That doesn't look like Gunther. All right, you made things difficult on me.
I'm sorry about that, Brad. My name's Rick Gunther, I reside at 701 West Lakeshore Drive in Coeur d'Alene. Anyway, I've had a lot of...
First, I have to swear, and I know you'd tell the truth anyway, but I gotta swear you in. You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, Rick, go ahead.
First of all, I had a lot of things that I was going to read, but I'm kind of alarmed, based on this last conversation, I'm trying to understand exactly what this is, and what I thought it meant, prior to this, for a zone change. What this is, and what I'm hearing from you, if we do this zone overlay, which is basically candy coating a zone change, for a down zone, no matter what we do, if somebody has a larger piece of property, and they want to have the opportunity to build a duplex, even with a public hearing, and going for a special use permit, that would not be allowed, under any circumstances, unless you change the law, am I correct on that?
Again, the uses that would be allowed is the one use allowed by right, which is the point of the restriction, and then any accessory or special use permit uses, which includes, within it, accessory dwelling units, I have to look at the rest of the list, boarding, well, you know, boarding house, childcare facility, any of the items that would be listed in the special use permit criteria. So there are other lists, uses, but the allowed by right uses would be the accessory uses, and then the single principal use being, single-family detached.
Now, I gotta interrupt here for a second. I'm hearing about a lot of lists, and I have no list in front of me, I have nothing in front of me that relates to a list that's can or can't go, and I don't want to go on this with my memory of saying, what can or can't be in there, I'd rather have that piece of paper in front of me, if we're going to start talking a list.
This is very important.
I can give you a copy of it, and I'll bring one up to you. The reality is, the list becomes a list of one item for allowed by right uses, which are principal uses. Then the accessory uses, there's only two or three of those allowed as accessory uses, you have accessory structures, which include carports, garages, other accessory uses include home occupation, that's an accessory use, so you can have a home occupation in that location. Accessory dwelling units, that's an accessory use, that's allowed by right still. Beyond that, you start getting into the special use permit allowed uses, and those all require hearing.
And when you say, an accessory unit, I remember when we, I think, passed that, and so, isn't, is there a certain size tied into that, certain accessory unit?
There's size restrictions, design criteria.
Or it can be on the lot in the back.
Occupancy requirements, but that's still unauthorized and allowed accessory use.
But there's nothing in there that says, you can do a single-family home? As a standard home, a regular-sized house on a lot, if this passes?
No, that's exactly what you're left with, is one single family.
No, I'm sorry, if we don't pass this, then they can do a single-family home and duplexes.
Yeah, if this doesn't pass, the allowed principal uses, or administrative uses, are duplex housing, essential service, home occupation, which is an accessory use, that's allowed anyways, neighborhood recreation, pocket residential, and then, public recreation, and single-family.
And that's code?
That's code.
State code.
Yeah, those are the elements that are allowed in the R8 zone by right in the city code.
Okay, in the city code.
Where I was mistaken initially, is I was looking at the R8 code, but this isn't really the whole R8 code, this is R8, but the special use permit's limiting it to only single-family, none of the other uses by right in the R8.
Yeah, for principal uses.
Right, none of the other principal uses.
Sorry if I interrupted you.
It's less than R8. I mean, not density-wise, but use-wise. So go ahead, Rick, and I'll give you a little more time, because you've been standing there for several minutes.
Basically, what this does, though we are in an R8 zone, and what I did for my property comes under the current zoning, which we have today, is pocket development. If this should pass for you guys, that would eliminate pocket development, it would eliminate even the possibility of a property owner in the foregrounds to be able to do multifamily, to do two homes on their property. It would only allow for single-family, and if you would go to Planning and Zoning to ask, request for a special use permit, well, they couldn't allow that, because there's not a law for that. It doesn't fall into the criteria of a special use permit. Now, that's absurd. This neighborhood's over 150 years old, I mean, today, and this truly, truly affects property values within the foregrounds. And there's a lot of properties out there, there's not a lot, there's probably just a handful of properties that could even possibly do this, and I think Steve McCray said that. This is ridiculous, it only affects a few properties, and we're doing all of this, and we're going through all of this, and we're disturbing and upsetting a neighborhood, and creating a division with our neighborhood. I like these people too, they might not like me as much for what I did, and I'm glad I did it, and probably some people are even asking me, well, Gunther, why are you up here? You've already done yours." Well, I have a real concern for my neighbors. I've been there for 33 years, along with my wife and kids, and we love that neighborhood. It's our third house in there. And what we did was important for us to do and for our financial well-being, and we had the right to do that. And I have sold over 30 houses in that neighborhood, and people saw exactly what the zoning is and what they're gonna get. Now you're gonna come and try to tell us, "Sorry, you can't do what you want to do with your property." That's gonna affect quite a few, a handful of properties in that neighborhood, and that's wrong. And I think members of the people that are for this zone change, or this overlay, probably really didn't understand the ramifications of what this really, really does to their neighbors. This is wrong, it should not be passed. And I surely hope you take all of these comments under consideration, because I think it's just a real abuse of power. And there's some things here that I think is important. Once again, it's private property rights. This is our right, that's our property. We pay a lot of taxes for these homes that we live in, and we should be able to do what we're allowed to do, as long as it qualifies with what the zoning, you know, with the zoning and building requirements are. So those are my comments. So I once again truly encourage you not to vote on this or to vote this thing down. And if there's a situation that we could relook at this and talk to the people in the neighborhood, and revisit this again, I would encourage that. But at this point, based on what you're saying and what this thing could potentially do to these property owners, we gotta kill this thing. It's not right. This neighborhood's done very well on its own for many, many years, and the property values have continually to go up, and I don't see any problem in that. It'll keep doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Mr. Gunther? I guess, I guess you're all set, Rick.
I do.
Okay. Let's see, Dan Geiger, have you in opposition? You'd like to testify? Okay, come on up, sir.
My name is Dan Geiger, and my property is at 321 Military Drive.
Okay, sir, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It is, I want to echo what Rick said, but what is interesting about this is, it does only affect, I think, probably five or six lots within the foregrounds that are large enough where you could put a duplex on it. My lot is not big enough to put a duplex on, so it doesn't affect me. So it affected just a few people, and I think everyone is well-intentioned and wants the right things for the foregrounds, but my experience with it is, that's an eclectic neighborhood. The projects that people do there are done tastefully, and we have a chance here to limit government and all the rules involved. And so I would urge you to consider this very carefully, because it does affect people that own property down there. It won't affect me, per se. Rick's already got his project, but there's five or six properties that it would affect, because in order to put a duplex in the foregrounds, you have to have about 11,000 square feet of land, and there's only a few lots that are that big. So, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Snyder has a beautiful home on Park Drive, and if he doesn't want to tear it down, I think that's neat. My home was built in 1905, and I don't want to tear it down, but I want to have the right to tear it down. And my concern is, if you pass something like this, then what's the next thing we're gonna be dealing with? Are we gonna be talking about what it has to look like and that type of thing? So I would just encourage you to weigh very carefully what's before you, because it does affect people's private property rights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tammy Mayo, have you in opposition? Do not wish to testify? Is that true? Is Tammy out there? All right. James Landers? Would you like to testify? Okay, come on up. State your name and address.
James Landers, 112 Forest Drive, Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, sir, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make two points. One is the petition that's being waved in front of you guys that shows overwhelming majority of people approving this. I think that those signatures were acquired under some incorrect information. That happened to me personally. I was asked if I was against the building of condominiums in our neighborhood. And wanting to just get along with the neighbors, I said yes. I later found out that the petition was actually an attempt by the neighborhood to stop Rick Gunther's project. And I never heard any more about this special use permit thing, as some other people have testified. And I think it's false to have the idea that the foregrounds neighborhood is speaking this, because I don't think it's a real, true representation. And to back that up and stuff, this is reading from a letter that the city has on file, we got from the city. This was to solicit signatures for this petition. It reads, "The neighborhood is under threat from a developer who has announced plans to demolish one of the large old homes and replace it with four condominiums on West Lakeshore Drive. This developer is also a homeowner, a real estate salesman, who has made thousands of dollars in commissions over the past years, as this self-described realtor to the foregrounds, the Beverly Hills of Coeur d'Alene." I asked to be taken off the petition when it went to this, before it went to the city. I was told by the people presenting that petition that that would happen, and it didn't. The petition still went with my name on it to the city. I had to go down to planning and zoning and find out that it was still on that and have my name removed. So I don't think that that's valid. The other thing I hear is, is that the foregrounds, the historic neighborhood, well, I've lived there for 27 years, and on my street, almost all the old houses have been knocked down, and large new modern houses built to the property lines. And I would just say this, if you lived in an old house built in 1910 that didn't have any insulation in it and single-pane windows and stuff, and your utility bills were running enormous and stuff, wouldn't you want to maybe knock it down and do something different? And do we need to have our neighbors regulating whether or not we can do that? I just don't think it's, should be changed. I think it is okay the way it is. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, Mary Ann Landers, I have you as not wishing to testify. Correct? Okay. All right, I can't quite make this last name out. It's Tim is the first name, 312 Military Drive. Pardon me? Oh, okay. Thank you. Patty Jester, would you like to testify? Is Patty out there? No? Okay. See, I think this is Nels, is it Nels Lord's, or 319 Park Drive?
My voice is busy.
Okay. Kevin Jester, would you like to testify, Kevin?
Why does my name-
Okay. Okay. Let's see, Karen Lawson, I have you in favor, do not wish to testify. Correct? And William Lawson, in favor, do not wish to testify. Let's see, Linda Nelson, have you in favor, doesn't say whether you'd like to testify or not?
No.
Okay. Deborah Bell, have you, you'd like to testify?
I haven't so recently.
Well, that's fine, come on up.
My name's Deborah Bell, I live at 724 West Garden Avenue.
Okay. And you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay.
Regarding the petition, we were out of town when the big furor hit, so we were not notified about any meetings. And when we did get home and the petition was presented to us, it was pretty grossly misrepresented, as far as, do you want condos built in the neighborhood? When I asked a question about a property that we owned in the neighborhood regarding, will we be able to put an apartment in that, we were told, "Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem, that won't apply." Well, clearly, after hearing everything, that's not true. We have a rental with four bedrooms, so we have four college kids in it. Actually, the whole intent of reducing the number of people in the neighborhood, or the density in the neighborhood, if we could put in a studio in the top and keep two bedrooms in the bottom for a small, when we'd have three renters instead of four, so it would reduce the number of people in the neighborhood. And as far as the character of the neighborhood, I'm sorry, in the words of Helen Barkley, one of the original people in the neighborhood, that ship has sailed. This overlay, the single dwelling, is not gonna preserve the beautiful old homes. It's not the intent of this change in the law. It's gonna, you can build a big, flat roof, lot line to lot line, single-family home. That's not gonna change anything. It's not gonna save the Craftsman historic neighborhood. The streets are narrow because they were laid out in 1905, so, and the cars are wider now. It's just, I don't think it's a good idea. I would really, really endorse having a workshop, and let everybody have their input, and maybe we could go at it again, with everybody participating, and a really candid look at how this would work for everybody, and not have individuals representing one side or the other, and have it really be truthful, truthfully represented, so people could decide on their own with all of the facts before they signed. I think that would be the fair way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry Godvoud, I have you in favor. Terry, do not wish to testify?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see, Jan Thomas, I have you in favor, do not wish to testify?
She had to say.
Okay. Let's see, and we have Mr. Dan Gookin, I have that you'd like to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to point out that I am a member of the city council, and this issue could potentially be appealed to the city council. I will be recusing myself. If that happens, I have consulted with the city attorneys, and they have decided since I participated in the signature gathering and in many of the meetings, that that pretty much precludes me from being involved in this issue at the council level. So I asked if it was okay for me to offer testimony, and the attorney said it was okay, which is why I'm here.
Okay. And that's smart, to always do what the attorney says. So, let's see, state your address, Dan.
Dan Gookin, 714 West Empire Avenue.
Okay, and then do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. When we choose to be a part of a civilization, we have to take it upon ourselves to apply some rules. So this is one of the functions that we have in Idaho and in various cities around the country, which is, we have a planning and zoning committee. And part of your job is to preserve the character and the nature of our existing neighborhoods, to make sure that when someone like me moves from the county, which is a little bit looser as far as restrictions, a little bit broader as far as property rights is concerned, and I choose to live in a neighborhood, then I know that the quality and the character of that neighborhood is going to be maintained. That's why we have zoning, that's why we have rules. And so we apply those to ourselves, and we agree to live under those restrictions, where we can do these things, and we might be able to do these things, but we definitely can't do those things. And when you have a group of people who have taken it upon themselves to participate in government and become active, and to gather signatures, and to follow the rules and regulations that we have set out as part of our city code and the codes in Idaho, and to do something that is part of the public process and is allowed by law, and you have 90 people sign that petition, over 70% of the property owners, 70% of the people of the land that is in the area, and they agree, and they petition the government and say, "Please apply these restrictions to us. We value where we live. We are willing to exist under these restrictions, because the character and the nature of our neighborhood is important to us." And I think that's what we have here this evening, is we have people, a great majority of our neighborhood, who have looked at what potentially could happen under the existing code. And granted, we've been kind of asleep on this for several years, where this has always been a possibility. And sometimes it takes a catalyst to bring people into action on this. And that's what's happened here. We have decided to take and follow the proper procedures, and get the signatures, and go through the process to apply these restrictions to ourselves, because we value where we live, we want to ensure that consistency in our neighborhood. And that, I believe, is what is important in this case, to notice that. Look at the numbers, and look at the fact that we are applying this to ourselves. We have over 70%, that's a huge, huge number. So I would like you to especially consider that, and also the role of planning and zoning in the city. Let's preserve the character of our existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. All right. Now, I apologize, I can't quite make this last name out, but it's Carolyn at 316 Military Drive.
I do not wish, need to testify, Dan says for me.
Okay. And then, this must be your spouse, that starts with an M.
That's what Dan said.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I have Barbara, is it Spira? 635 West Garden? Okay. And Roxanne Gunther, you have better penmanship than Rick.
Roxanne Gunther, I recite, well, I used to recite at 701 West Lakeshore Drive, it's now under construction.
Okay. And Roxanne, you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
First of all, I want to say, if all of you are having difficulty understanding what this overlay means, do you really think that the 80 people that signed that petition know what they're signing, what they actually signed? I mean, they've had it explained to them by an overzealous person that was selling it as apartment buildings that they were denying. That's one version that I heard. Anyway, I have lived in the foregrounds for 33 years, and I enjoy living in the foregrounds. I love the sounds, I love the traffic, I love the crowds, I love everything that it brings. And there's a certain group of people that live in the foregrounds area that have more or less overrun the Foreground Homeowners Association. And they have stopped many of the events that my family and a lot of our other homeowners have enjoyed over the years. Iron Man was stopped from going down into our neighborhood- Iron Man was stopped from going down into our neighborhood, the neighbors, two or three people did not like all the traffic, and the congestion that that brought, so, working with Iron Man people, they rerouted out of our neighborhood. The same group of people complain about cars speeding through the neighborhood, they complain about lights, they complain about the boats coming in late at night, the cruise boats on late summer nights, you know, they have really taken this whole idea of the Foreground homeowners, and I think they've abused what we really stand for. And we initiated, as we moved into the neighborhood in nine, in the nineteen eighties, my husband was the first president of the Foreground homeowners, and that was formed to stop NIC from invading into the Foreground area. We, it united the group. Now, what this has done, it's actually divided the neighborhood, and I like everybody, too, I enjoy living there, I want to continue to live there. I just want to tell you that, just to set the record straight, our house was built in nineteen fourteen on Third and Harrison, it was moved to the present location in nineteen fifty-five. That home did not have any insulation in it, I'm talking zero, no newspapers, no pine cones, no straw. The, the two-by-four walls were whistled clean, and our heating bills were outrageous. So, I felt comfortable tearing the house down, it was, had been added on to several times in the fifties and the eighties, and then we also added on when we first bought it in two thousand and five. The home itself is being replaced by four beautiful townhomes, we have combined them to make it look like a home, two homes rather than four townhouses. We love the neighborhood, we want our neighbors to also be able to do the same type of changes, you know, you can't stop progress, and when you're dealing with these older homes that don't have insulation, it's time to do something about it, and you're going to get caught by the green people, or, one, one thing or the other, you've got to keep up with, with, um, modern technology, and get your home to the, the way it should be economically for you. We all know what the R-eight zone is now, and I think we've heard it several times, I feel like to add another layer of approval, that special use permit is really an infringement on our property rights. And I do want to let you know that we did present the plans of our home to the Foreground homeowners, it was discussed, and it was actually, we actually received a few verbal endorsements from a few individuals, one of them is here with us, and a few weeks later, there was silence, we heard whispering in the neighborhood, we thought, what is going on, and then, lo and behold, we hear about the petition. But it was done, pretty much without our knowledge, just like has been, has been mentioned a couple times from the other testimonials, and I feel that we need to work together to get this resolved, and we want the neighborhood to endure another hundred and five years, and, um, it's in everybody's best interest to listen to everyone. I feel that it was, the people that signed were coerced into it and intimidated. That's not everybody, but I, I have heard that several were, so, I want you to seriously consider, um, tabling this, or, or going to further discussion within the neighborhood, or with a special group, I don't know how that works, but, that's my stand.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question for you, does the design of your townhouse look like the environment it's in?
It's designed to be like a Craftsman style, two-story home, with the front porch and the, the columns, and the detailing will be, will be with the shake and the battening board, real similar to the styles that were used with the Craftsman era.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roxanne. Okay. Uh, that's all I have here, is there anyone who'd like to testify that didn't get a chance to talk tonight? Okay, come on up. Sean, do we need to have her sign a, a form while she's up there?
Hi, my name is Amy Huel, I live at 101 Terry Drive.
Okay, Amy, do you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, and you can go ahead and talk, and then just sign that when you get done there, in the interest of time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I purchased my home in two thousand and six, knowing I had options for my parcel of land, in the event economic hardships were imposed on me, such as, such as the hardships that have been created in the recent economic downturn. It seems pointless for this review board to even consider changing the current zoning laws on the books, because it would create economic hardship on the township. And what I mean specifically, is that if I were to develop several single-family dwellings, detached single-family dwellings, this would increase the tax base, which means more dollars for the township. It is for this reason, I think the board should send this back to the township for further review. I do have the largest land in the Foregrounds, um, I have a house that's from nineteen fifty-two, it's got a lot of problems, it's a real pain in the neck, and it's a really large lot. My parcel is actually made up of four separate parcels, um, that are combined into one. I feel that I could put, you know, three different, full-size, single-family dwelling, detached homes, and I really don't think that I should have to go through a whole special permit for something where my, my lot, I can look at it on the, on the plat here, and I can see four or five different small homes that are already in the Foregrounds that would fit easily into my parcel. So, I really feel that it's unfair to me, and I wrote a letter to, um, the city, and I spoke about, you know, this is my, my future, this is my well-being, um, this piece of land. And I also was misrepresented, the, the position was misrepresented to me, it was completely presented as something that was, the word apartment kept coming up, and I am against apartment buildings in our neighborhood, I don't think that our neighborhood is suited for apartment buildings. But I do think duplexes, though that's not something that maybe I would do, but duplexes, single-family dwellings, do fit into my parcel of land, more people could enjoy it, the city could enjoy more property tax coming in, I pay over thirteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and I've, I've put that into my equation, into remaining there as a single woman who has a very overwhelming parcel. And, um, would also like to note on a sidebar, that I am the person with the motorhome that is, and it kills me, too, so if anybody wants to buy a motorhome, please discuss it with me after the meeting.
You sounded interested in buying it, so you should talk to him after the meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't like looking at it either, and my, and I did come back into town on Sunday to be here for this meeting, and I have been gone for a couple of months, so, this is really, a really big deal for me, so, I would like for you to really think about, um, the ramifications for people like me, who are people who have these parcels, and also, for the fairness of, how, how valid was this, um, petition? It wasn't representative to me, I also, like James Landers, had to come downtown with my letter, pull out my driver's license, sign in front of someone to get my name removed from the petition, so, it really was misrepresented, and that's not right. Anything else? I have a minute, thirty-eight. I think that's it, but, um, I, I, I think that this does need to be re-looked at.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to testify? All right, we have a few more, let's see, I'll just go with this gentleman in front in the blue jacket, we'll just kind of work from the front back there, I guess. Come on up and state your name and address. And then when you get done, the staff will help you sign that form there.
Hi, my name's Randy Bell, and I live at 728 West Garden.
Okay, sir, you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'd just like to reiterate the, the fact that the petition wasn't exactly presented as the way it should have been, and, uh, the fact that it was known that I was against that petition, uh, we were never approached, never notified of any changes, I had no knowledge of the city council meeting, granted, I could have followed city council meetings a little closer, but, I had no notification that there was going to be a change in stature from seventy-five percent down to sixty or sixty-six. We have two lots in the Foregrounds, which combined, uh, comes up to fifteen thousand five hundred square feet, so there's a possibility that I can combine those lots, and again, that's, uh, a taking of my property rights, if we change this, um, I do have the rental, and I do have, you know, four bedrooms, I guess, I suppose legally, I've got four different people in there, you could say I've got four families, I don't know that, you know, where this could end up going legally. It would preclude me from putting an apartment, you know, breaking it into two units, um, I talked to Brian Palmerance, who is not here tonight, but he also said that he had taken his name off the petition, and it looked to me, when I looked at that, that his name was still colored out. I also have a question on the overlay, one of my properties is designated brown, or is different, could I have that overlay, uh, put up, just so I can? Anyway, my two lots are the ones right there, in there, and so I'm, I'm wondering what the designation is on that, why is that brown, that?
It's simply a reflection of the current use on the property, the yellow reflects single-family use, the brown reflects?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So, anyway, I, that's about all I have to say, other than the fact that the horse has definitely left the barn on, on the historic level of the neighborhood, there's been, uh, three houses on my street in the last several years that have, have changed, there's been several that have been torn down, rebuilt, in the character of the neighborhood, but there's been more that have not. As far as multifamily, you go up government way, and there's that cluster housing development, that is designed much more, uh, historical than many of the new homes that are going into the Foreground. So, um, that's all I have to say, thank you, for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir, all right, uh, come on down, sir. State your name and address up there.
I previously said I wasn't going to testify.
Okay.
Couple, couple small points I'd like to make. I'm Ken Murphy, 513 North Park.
Okay, Ken, you swear the testimony you're about to make will be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so, okay.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of points, one, um, the petition that I got was one sentence, very easy to read, very easy to understand. Second, I live in a house that I'm told was an eighteen ninety pole barn, made into a house in nineteen twenty. When I bought it, it had knob and tube, had no insulation, I've done both. My garage was falling down, um, I had it repaired in the, um, same style as the house itself, so that it preserves the tradition of a military house. This is what I bought, this is the neighborhood I wanted, I'd like to keep it that way, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, come on down.
I did sign, uh, and I declined to comment earlier, but I would like to, brief comment.
You can always change your mind, so just?
All right. Kevin Jester, 316 Forest Drive.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
I get along with most people, but I don't necessarily like everybody, so. I get along with, I get along with the neighbors, I have lived in the neighborhood for thirty-five years, my wife and I moved there in nineteen thirty-nine, or nineteen, um, I don't live that old, do I? Sorry, nineteen seventy-nine, we lived in the same home on Forest Drive. Seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood, um, would like to preserve, as Dan eloquently stated, I think that is really was the intent, uh, of the Foreground Homeowners Association, was to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Those of us that have lived there for a long time have come to know it is a very special place, it is not anywhere you say, it is the Foregrounds in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, a very special place. I would just ask that tonight, that you take that into consideration. The pieces of property that are, that are really affected are just a few, what we are asking for, as I understand the petition, and I understood it when I signed it, was just the opportunity to know what was going to be done with those pieces of property, so that we could see how it impacted the character of the neighborhood. It was not to shut them down, was not the intention, it was simply to have a say in how it was going to impact the character of the neighborhood. So I hope you take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, come on down, sir.
I had Carrie had signed to speak, and she wasn't called.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, uh, you, you can sure come on down right now.
Can I, can I?
Either, either one.
Did she give, did she seize her time to me?
If you've testified, that's it for you tonight.
We're good.
Okay. All right. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, last call. All right, so, Warren, that would close public testimony, right? We don't have rebuttal or anything?
Still have rebuttal from the applicant.
We do have rebuttal, okay? So, who would do rebuttal? It wouldn't be all four of them, would it?
It would be the applicant, so the, the person speaking on behalf of the applicant would come up, and they have an opportunity to rebut any of the testimony that they've heard tonight.
Okay, so this is a little bit different than some of our, our normal hearings, okay, so we have, that would be, uh, Anne, right? Or you? Or whoever is appointed to come up, if it's not Anne. Okay? Just state your name, uh, for the record, Anne.
I'm Melbourne, I'm president of the Homeowners Association.
You're still under oath, like we say on Perry Mason.
Yes.
All right.
On the map that you have, all of the names that, the parcels that are marked in pink were signatures that were accepted by the city. People who asked to have their, who had their names removed, they went to the city and followed the, the legal procedure that they had to do. When the membership at the meeting, which was noticed to the neighborhood in the form that our, all of our meetings are, noticed to the neighborhood, and voted that they wanted to keep, and support the integrity of a single-family neighborhood into the Foregrounds, as we've all come to know it, they directed the board to follow through. We met with the city, we had been in touch, and we worked with the city attorney's office through this whole process, so all of the procedures that were followed, the statement that people were shown to sign, how they signed the documents, were all done under the direction of the city attorney's office, and all those signatures were validated in the manner that they requested they be done. Uh, just to note, uh, the parcel that we live on, 210 North Forest, is shown on the map as a duplex, it has not been a duplex, it's two thousand and three when we remodeled the house, it is a single-family residence, and cannot be converted back to a duplex with the current floor plan.
Okay.
And I just want to thank you for your time tonight, I think that the number of signatures and the property owners in the neighborhood speak for itself, that we want to maintain the integrity of the Foregrounds as a single-family residential neighborhood, and keep with historic character that has been, been going on for the last hundred and fifty years.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Right, thank you, Anne, all right, let's see if we have any questions, we have one question.
A couple items have come up here from people that are, that support your position, I think.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
A couple i, items have come up here, the people that support your position, one just most recently, is just an opportunity to know what's going on, is what, he said that that's what they're looking for. Do you, do you agree with that?
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to, I'm not trying to grill you, I'm trying to, to come to understand a little bit better.
Because when you come for a special use permit, does our understanding is like with this, with any property owners are notified within three hundred feet of the applicant of what they implant, or would like to do with their property, and it's, so the neighbors are aware of what's going to happen and how it's going to happen before Cannon Hill shows up with their equipment, which is what has been happening in the neighborhood.
And then another one of your, uh, members commented that this will permit a special, people can do a duplex in there with a special use permit. But, I think I heard Warren say, you can't. Am I right? And what you first said, I think, is, you want the opportunity to know if somebody's going to use, make a dup, du, build a duplex there.
I didn't refer to duplex, I said multifamily.
A multifamily.
So, how they use it as cluster, pocket, condominium, whatever terminology. So how they use it as cluster, pocket, condominium, whatever terminology, those were permitted under R eight. And this way, if they were, wanted a special use, it is our understanding that the neighbors within three hundred feet would be notified of their intent to change the use of their property.
Under this revision, we don't have any special use in here, do we, Warren?
There are special uses, as we've talked about. The list of special use items remains. And you're, they're correct that, as with anywhere in the city, if there's, if there's an application for a special use permit, we provide notice to properties within three hundred feet. It's also published notice and a sign is posted on the property for any of the uses that are allowed by special use permit. That's standard practice for any special use permit process in the city.
Some of the individuals have been speaking against this, used the word, I think, duplex. And that currently, or townhouse, that currently is not permitted under special use. Is that correct? I mean, would not be...
To be clear, it's currently allowed by right as a principal use. If the, if this were to pass tonight, the list of permitted uses, outright permitted uses, would be reduced to one item, that being single-family detached. You would still have the existing special use permit items, which does not include duplex, and you would have the existing accessory use items. That's the list that you would be left with if this were to pass tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann.
Any other questions?
I have a question. And I feel for you guys in the foregrounds. I mean, whatever you're going through here isn't great for the neighborhood, because I've been through it myself. But, and I get back to a design criteria. Does the foregrounds have any design criteria whatsoever so that if someone wants to be notified that something's going to happen on someone's piece of property, regardless of what they can build, that there would be a design review committee that would have to see these plans? First of all, which would give notification to the homeowners association, as well as perhaps some guidelines that you, the homeowners in the foregrounds, would make up saying, well, maybe you can do a duplex or a townhouse or something other than a single-family home, but it must follow these criterias. So the integrity of historical area as the foreground is, is still, perhaps, you can still get that. Has that ever come up as a discussion point before this?
Have design criteria?
Excuse me?
Are you referring to the fact of having design criteria? That's a hotter potato than this discussion tonight, because nobody wants to be told what color their house can be. And so this, coming up with having a...
Can you repeat that? Wait, can, can you repeat that, your last name, and no one wants to what?
No one wants to be told what color their house is, and we have not, there has not been a move to start any committee so that there is a design review if you want to change something on your home.
Okay.
As long as it meets the city requirements, that's the only restriction right now.
Okay. And I, and I understand what you're saying, no one wants to have a color that you should be told you can have. And maybe you don't have that in there, but I'm talking about preserving the characteristics of a neighborhood. Do you feel that a design review committee could help the foregrounds do that?
I don't know at this time.
Okay.
Because it's right now, so many of what, there are a lot of the older homes, there were the twelve covenants on the, on the, of deed restrictions, but they were not on the original plats filed with the city. That's why a lot of your older homes have the setbacks they do in where their accessory buildings are located, because that's what their deed restrictions were when they bought and built those original homes in the nineteen hundreds.
Okay.
And those rules are very different from what the city code is today.
And, and again, I'm not talking about city code...
So that we run into, there, there is that conflict there.
And I'm not talking about city codes as setbacks or building codes. I'm talking internally, within a homeowners association, of a design...
There's, there's, there's no desire by the homeowners to do that at this time.
So if you wanted to just remodel your house, you just go to the city and draw plans and...
Correct.
HOA has no influence at all?
That's what's been happening, yes.
And, and you, okay, never mind, thank you. Um, no more questions.
Okay. I guess that's, that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, so now public testimony is closed.
Mr....
Yes?
Some testimony, this only applies to so many lots. I, I, can you quiet, is there, is there a small number of lots that this, that this will affect?
I, I'll just jump in, and I think what they're saying is there's a handful of lots that are big enough to do some of the things like the Gunthers did. So a lot of the lots are so small, people are testifying to us that you couldn't really do much of anything but a single-family house anyway. So there's only a handful of lots big enough to do something else.
But you could buy a couple lots and that would give you enough size.
Unless somebody could, yeah, buy a couple lots and put them together.
But if you have a lot that's really big and you only have one structure on it, can you put more structures on that lot?
I think some of them you could, because there's enough square footage. You may have to plat them or something.
Lot split.
But I'm just saying in general, what I got from the testimony was that there's just a small handful of lots that are probably the most likely ones that, you know, development like the Gunthers or something else would happen on.
And if you have a gigantic lot...
Bigger lot, you got the more you, more chances you got to do something, yeah.
Thank you.
That was my interpretation of it. So we have some discussion, if somebody can make a motion?
I'd like, well, I like discussion. Seems to me, you know, this is just a very interesting, and everybody's right, sort of. We, we had one individual, in fact, two, was suggesting maybe a workshop could be held, possibly chaired by the city, so there could be a full understanding by all parties how, what this is going to do and how it's going to do it. So it seems to me that there's some misunderstanding, and I can see where it would be by A talking to B and B talking to C. I mean, it's just a, a, a lot of discussion that is passed through sort of like whispering on a table. And the foregrounds is a well-established neighborhood. I mean, the, the people are very sincere there, and I would hate to do something that adds to the disruption of the neighborhood if there's a way that we could bring it together and get a resolution that is maybe not fully supported by everybody, but certainly fully understood by everybody. And maybe a way to do that, as was suggested, is to have some type of city workshop, city, I say, because they have some disinter, they're a disinterested party in some respects, and have that occur, have a common understanding, maybe not agreement, and then have this come back to us. I don't know how to do that, but it's a thought, and I, I would, maybe we can discuss that.
Say, Warren, I have a quick question for you. I'll try and figure out how to, how to phrase this, but this petition is, is the petition a critical element as far as the approval, the approval of this, of the, as far as the viability of the legality of this request? Or is the petition a vehicle to bring it before us and then really the decision rests with us because it's been brought before us and the, how, how critical is the validity of the petition to this? Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So, right now, I've heard enough testimony from people, and I, you know, read some of the letters that have come in. I'm not, I'm not sure what the percentage is of people that support the petition and don't support it. There's...
So let me answer it by first reading what the code actually says about this process, and then we can talk a little bit about what the meaning of the petition is and the potential for neighborhood meetings in, as part of this process. What the code says is, in this district, a special use permit may be requested by neighborhood sponsor to restrict development for a special, or for a specific area to single-family detached housing only at eight units per gross acre. To constitute a neighborhood sponsor, at least sixty-six percent of the people who own at least sixty-six percent of the property involved must be a party to the request. So the, what the, the signatures do essentially is qualifies them to bring the request for a special use permit. It's not necessarily a part of your approval criteria. Your approval criteria are those elements that Sean went through tonight in his staff report. Those are the three things that you have to answer in determining whether or not this application should be granted. This is, the petition was simply the vehicle in which this got the ball rolling, that qualified them to make the ask to bring this issue before you tonight. So it's not an approval criteria. You look to the, the approval criteria for a special use permit is outlined in the staff report. Speaking to the idea of, could we have some sort of community workshops to address the foregrounds? You certainly are free to do that. I would suggest to you that that's not a part of this process. As planning and zoning commissioners, you serve two roles. One is as a planning commissioner and the other is a zoning commissioner. As a planning commissioner, that means you're looking at longer term, what do we want the world to look like? You can set the rules, make changes, to identify how you want to see growth happen in the city. At the time somebody submits an application, you put on the different hat, you become a zoning commissioner. In doing that, you're applying the rules as written to the request. At that point, you take off the planning hat and you're focusing solely on whether or not the approval criteria have been met. So it could be done, and there probably is a time and a place to do that, but it's not as a part of this process.
Could we table this and, and have that workshop then bring it back?
I think that would be difficult. I think the, the problem that you're going to have is how do you keep them separate? I mean, the, the valid reason to table this or to continue it to a future point in time is because there's some piece of the, the approval criteria that you need more information on to be able to answer the question. So if you can legitimately say, you know, I need more information on this element and continuing it to get more information will provide us the basis for making that decision, then I think that you could. But just to essentially allow or provide time for community meetings, I'm not sure that that's a valid way to go about that process.
So I, I respect the fact that, from a planning perspective, they want to protect and preserve the look and the feel of the area. But from a zone, on the zoning side, the, the percentages based on the testimony, I'm not convinced that the sixty-six percent threshold's been met.
And we measured that before we took the application in. That's the critical threshold. They needed to qualify as a sponsor. So when they brought in the signatures, we reviewed those signatures to make sure that they reached that threshold. Have people changed their mind since that time? It's entirely possible that some people have changed their mind. We took people off the list as we received them prior to that point where we put it on the agenda to move forward. Again, this was just to qualify it to move forward.
Okay. Warren, I have a question regarding the findings on this. How do we, I've been trying to go through the findings. Is it like our normal procedure that it has to meet all the comprehensive plan criteria? Or is it one particular one? How, which, I...
So the gist of the findings are that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. That's the first finding. The second one is the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. The last one being the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that development will or will not adequately be served by existing streets, facilities, and services. You saw in the staff report, and frankly, you've not heard any testimony tonight about public services. I think that one is a no-brainer. It's, it's not really changing the neighborhood as far as services goes. So I think you're really focusing in on whether or not the comprehensive plan elements have been met, and then whether or not a restriction to single-family only is compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. Those are really the two elements that you're looking to make a decision on tonight.
And I guess maybe there's where I'm confused. If I say the comprehensive plan has been met because of those two elements, is it because of the zoning is fine, the R eight, or is it because of the people who are doing the petition are saying, well, it should be single-family? I'm, there's where I'm confused. How do I circle the yes, it is, or no, it's not?
So, and I will grant you, this is a fairly confusing process. Typically, when you're granting a special use permit, you're, it's an additive process. You're adding additional uses. This one's in reverse, it's taking away uses. So it's a bit unusual. As we discussed when we were looking at the code change, there's only been one other time since this code, it was adopted in nineteen eighty-two, that this process has ever been used. So probably predates all of you, except for maybe Brad, be my guest. No offense, Brad.
Was that in the early nineties in Pine Grove Park?
So it's, it is a confusing process. Having said that, again, you're listening to what the testimony was tonight. You're weighing it out in your mind, what makes the most sense to you based on the criteria that you have to look at. And that criteria is, what does the comprehensive plan tell me about this neighborhood? Does it, does it favor a restriction to single-family, or is, should it be, based on the comprehensive plan, open to other types of principal uses? And then looking at the question under B eight B, is a restriction to single-family only, is that compatible, or excuse me, compatible with the location setting and existing uses on the surrounding properties? And beyond that, I'm really hesitant to go, because that's getting into your decision-making bailiwick, and outside of mine is helping you sort through it.
Yeah, we, for the benefit of the audience, we're grasping with this a little bit, because Warren alluded to, I don't think this has been done for a couple of decades. There's, there's been this process to have a neighborhood request a special use permit such as this, but it hasn't been, I can just think of that one time, it hasn't been done for decades.
And if...
So it's a little different animal than we're usually used to, so...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But anyway, we're, we're here to figure it out, yeah.
Whether it's a approval or a denial, can we direct staff to do the findings?
Certainly.
Mm-hmm.
I, I keep coming back to this, and I apologize, I'm just a slow thinker. But one of the things that stuck in my mind is if you have a, a, a special use permit process. Granted, it's, it takes time, it has some expense. But currently, we don't have a special use category for multifamily or for duplexes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a way that we can add that as a special use?
Certainly through a code change.
And that code change would have to take place after we, after we address this? Or can we set this off? Well, I, I don't want to leave.
Yeah, almost by necessity, you would be answering this question first.
Pardon me?
Yeah, you would most likely be answering this question first, because you're going to have to go through essentially some level of review and determination on what the planning commission wants to do. If you want to add for this use, a special use permit for duplex housing, you would have to make that determination sort of in a workshop setting, and then have a hearing on it, and then that item is forwarded to the city council for their determination. So you're certainly going to be in a position to make this determination tonight before that ever reaches fruition.
And if we... And when we make that, if we make that decision, especially, then it goes retroactive and will apply to the foregrounds?
Yeah, I believe so. It's, you're kind of giving me a little bit flat-footed, but I think my off-the-cuff answer would be yeah. I mean, we would give them the benefit of the doubt.
Would this be a, a cause for us to set this over for a date to be... Would this be a, a cause for us to set this over for a date to be determined? That date to be determined based on working with the council and if they do or do not pass a special use permit, special use provision?
Again, I'm not sure that I think that that's an appropriate approach to the question. I, I really think that you're in a position where you've been presented tonight with evidence from folks both pro and con. And your role here is to, even if it's a difficult decision, to make a decision based on the record that was produced rather than the record that you would hope would be produced. You're, you're kind of hung with what you're presented with and you have to make a decision based on what we have.
I think I understand it. I also have a strong desire to see if there's a way you can work with the community to get a common understanding and more common agreement and we're all, you know, it's the benefit of all.
Like I said, I believe that there is a, a place and a time and a place for that. I'm not sure that that's as part of the hearing process.
Thank you.
Peter, I, I hear what you're saying about trying to get...
A little more collaboration.
Right, within the neighborhood, but I don't, I personally, and I'm talking to myself, don't feel that's my charge here to try to get a neighborhood together which has a homeowners' association that's been in effect for a lot of years for something like this that affects what property owners can or cannot do when they bought their property originally. I feel that there's been a lot of discussion, pro and con, whether it's 70 percent or 30 percent, but you can't ignore the 30 percent just because there's 70 percent of the people saying yes, this should be done. The 30 percent of the people who say no have as much voice as the 70 percent people. Just let me finish here. So it is confusing. It's something that's going to affect not the whole neighborhood, but a few parcels. Those people do have their property rights as far as they bought their property based on what that zoning is. And the comprehensive plan does state a few things. It's in a, you know, historical area. It's, what changes is going to be, I read one, that surrounding area, not so much the fork ground is changing and it will continue to change. And the fork grounds is going to change. I feel, again, I brought this up and this is my own opinion, that internally, the fork grounds should try to make their decision on this with some sort of design review. You could, you can certainly do something like that and still keep the characteristic of a neighborhood without taking a few things away from a few property owners. I mean, that's how I feel. I cannot do these findings. That's why I asked if staff could do them because I'm not comfortable dealing with them because I, I just can't grab what should be or shouldn't be. And I'll go on record saying I don't agree with this. I don't think it should be approved.
A couple of points. One, I understand that's 70 percent and 30 percent, but I don't think I'm listening to what that percentage is. That, that's not how I'm making my decision.
No, I don't say you did. I just, I, I heard testimony and I wanted to respond to that.
That, that percentage is just to get it before.
That's just there.
And secondly, if, if, if we aren't in a position to help the group get together and work together, who is? You said you don't think it's our, our job and you might be right, but if, if we don't, who, who will? Who should? Who will?
I'm not saying it isn't our task to help people. That's why we're here and that's why we volunteer. To have a work group, workshop, I, I don't know what that's going to accomplish. There's been talk in that neighborhood from the Gunthers who said that they show plans to people and however, we heard that testimony. So I think internally, within the fork grounds, there's some issues and I don't believe that's our charge here as commissioners. We're here to listen to testimony and we have to make an unbiased decision on that and it's tough. And this is a tough one. So I'm not saying we're not here to help people. I'm all for helping. I volunteer just like you do. And some things are cut and dry and some things are a little bit more tougher to make that decision, but a decision still has to be made.
Well, I think we can all make our, we all will make the decision. You know, we, we, we're, we're, we're good at making decisions. May not be, you know, common amongst us, but we're good at that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, again, my, my desire is, is there a way that we can get the group together to have a more common understanding? And as I understand it, there may not be, we can address the, the, the variance at a later date if we want to. So I, I think I have enough information.
And I respect you, Peter.
Yeah, yeah. But that's what's, that's what's good about a group. You can have these discussions. It takes a long time, but at least we have, we have discussions and we come to have a common understanding of what we're doing, maybe not a common agreement, but common understanding.
Anything else?
You know?
I'd like to ask Warren something real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Warren, I just want to ask perhaps one last time, just for clarification purposes. Since I'm the new commissioner, I think I hopefully have the right to ask this of you. Through testimony earlier, we heard those that are in favor of this special use permit for the request for that special use. They put out the testimony that down the road, if someone wants to develop a multifamily dwelling on, on any of those parcels that qualify for that type of use, they could in fact come back and, and talk about it or discuss it and perhaps it could happen. But then listening to what you were trying to describe about how it's not in that special use, it's, it falls outside of the special use parameters or the list of what's on the special use list, am I to understand that it won't happen then or it can't happen? Is that correct? Am I understanding?
I think that you've got that correct. So the, by multifamily, if you mean duplex, triplex, and above, that's not an allowed use in the zone, assuming this passes. What you're left with as...
Because it falls outside of the special use list.
By right, is that, is that single-family detached. You, there is the, the potential and frankly, there probably are residents now that have accessory dwelling units. Those are a small associated unit that you can rent out that someone else lives in. Those are perfectly acceptable still. So if by multifamily, that's what you're referring to, that's still allowed, that's not a special use permit process. That's just a matter of coming and talking to the city and getting the appropriate approvals to do that.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm not sure which way this is going. I don't have a vote tonight as the chairman unless there's a tie. I want to thank everybody for how civil and polite everyone has been with each other and I, I, even though there's two opposite sides here, I, I mean, everyone's been very civil with each other. And I can see you all have passion and love for your neighborhood and the fork grounds is a special place. Corlaine's a special city and the fork grounds is a special place. And I guess I would say, you know, my heart is with the people who brought this petition to us. I'm not sure this petition is going to accomplish what they're hoping it will accomplish, but I understand why they're doing it and my heart's with them. But the, the fork grounds is like any neighborhood. It's, it's dynamic and it's evolving. And so you have, you have the old, original houses in there. Then we've got some mid-century houses that have been put in there. We've had some houses built in the 70s, 80s, 90s. And a lot of these houses have been pretty good additions to the fork grounds. Some haven't been. I don't, I don't think some of these houses that are newer houses, less several decades built, have been the best houses in the fork grounds. And I don't know that this proposal would stop that. You know, stop multifamily and some of that, but I, I'm thinking, I'm looking for a demonstrable imminent threat to the fork grounds that, that necessitates we pass this tonight. And, and I don't know that I see that, that there's anything imminently bad that's going to happen to the fork grounds. And if we do pass this, I don't know that this would still stop a big ugly house from being built in the fork grounds. And, and we've seen a, I'm not going to say who has a big ugly house in the fork grounds, but I've seen, you know, a couple of houses over the years that I don't know that, you know, are probably the best in the fork grounds. And so I think this is a noble attempt to preserve the fork grounds and I love the fork grounds. I don't live there, but I've always loved the fork grounds. But I think sometimes, you know, we, we, we try so hard, you know, to pass laws and preserve something and it doesn't necessarily accomplish what we're trying to do and we, we make ourselves all a little bit less free doing that. So if I had to vote a tiebreaker on this, I'd probably vote against this just because I don't see this ordinance as stopping a big ugly house from going in like we've seen a couple over the years. And I don't see the direct imminent threat of a big multifamily project going in there right now. So that's my feeling on it. And, and I would, I would certainly offer the services of the planning commission to try and have a workshop meeting and, and try and come up with some ways to, you know, and I don't know, this may pass tonight. I don't know how the vote's going to go tonight, but if, assuming it doesn't, or if it does even, I'd certainly offer the planning commission to try and have some workshop hearings and offer our staff to try and, you know, see what else we can do to preserve the neighborhood aside from this hearing tonight, just to, you know, preserve the fork grounds because it's a special place.
I'm not against the workshop. Don't get me wrong on that. I'm all for that if that's going to help. But I think a decision needs to be made tonight. We just can't just pass this on and say, "Hey, come back and you guys work it out." That's kind of where I was going.
No, I agree with you. We need to make a decision tonight because, and so, and that's my opinion on, on, on this proposal, rightly or wrongly. And this is difficult because we volunteer to sit up here and I'm looking out here at how many people are friends and acquaintances of mine that live in the fork grounds and they're all on different sides of this thing. So I'm listening to what everybody says and I'm carefully weighing this thing in, in formulating my, my opinion and that's kind of how I feel. But prolonging the agony here and trying to have a workshop meeting over the next several months isn't going to solve this tonight. I think we're here to make a decision. Our decision is appealable to the city council by either party. And so, but I'm just offering if there's something we can do as this evolves and people have time to digest this and think about it, you know, maybe there's something we can do with some workshop hearings and maybe do a, you know, maybe do a little more focused study on the fork grounds and how to do something. But nothing is going to be easy because obviously this isn't easy here tonight to just, for everyone to agree on this. And so if we try to talk about another avenue like some kind of design guidelines or something like that, that's not going to be easy either to get an agreement on. So there's no easy answers on this because like I said, we, when you put these restrictions on to try and save, save the neighborhood or preserve it, you also, you also infringe on some rights, on the other hand, make everybody a little less free. So sometimes we chase our tail trying to do this, but I, I certainly respect everybody's opinion on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate if one of the student reps wanted to say something? I know you've taken this all in and you've been sitting here for hours listening. If you might have an opinion of...
Yeah, I was writing down something I'd like to say. I don't believe there's enough public testimony heard tonight in favor of the zone change to warrant a zone change. I also see change happening already within the fork grounds. Public testimony indicated that a zone change like this would be unfair to the property owner and change the initial agreement with the title that was issued to him. With this, I would have to say I'm in disagreement with the zone change, but I'm in favor of a public workshop.
Okay.
The city would hold.
I would have to say that I agree with Commissioner Messina that, and you guys about the workshop. I think if you look at this petition and where we are today, and if you were to go back, it, it would be interesting to see if we'd still be in the same position. I think that the, the percentages on, to, to get us into this situation, I'm not convinced based on the testimony that those numbers would still be the same today. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I, I think through a workshop, and I'm willing to invest some time in that as well, I think we could help develop a criteria that is mutually agreeable to all.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to agree because like, I know that we've said that the petition is more of a runway or like car to get it here, but at the same time, like as many people have stayed here, like it calls here that like they must be party to the applicant here and I don't think that it was like presented that they are signing petition to come and like try and change this, just like are they in favor or not? And if I'm incorrect on whether or not that makes this valid or not, but I would not say, I'm not in approval of voting for this, so thank you.
I, I must say that our student representatives pay a lot of attention and put a lot of thought in there. Those are two well-thought-out remarks. Now, my feeling is, and position, I guess, is I believe that the proposed before us is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So I'm in support of it. However, I, I am in support of it in the belief, in the feeling that we can work to get to a, some special use permit process to permit the, some property owners to expand their, their use of that property. But that, that needs to, especially this permit. If we reject this now, we've gone no place and we've, we've not done anything and we have, we've not charged ourselves with anything. We have not charged the community with anything. So I'm, I'm going to speak in support of this and if, if I have, if we do support the proposal, then I, I will immediately make a motion for us to work together on a special use permit process to follow. Does that make sense?
All right. Well, there's been some good discussion here. We've got another pretty big hearing coming up tonight. So does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, my, my motion, I'll put it out. It would be to approve the, this proposed special use permit, to approve it. And because it's incompatible with our comprehensive plan, I believe. And then to work to develop a special use permit process to add back in some of the usages, the primary multi-unit, duplexes and multi-unit.
Okay, so the first part of this is you're making a motion in favor of, of this proposal, SP eight dash 13 and direct, the, SP six, I'm sorry, dash 13, and direct staff to draw up the findings.
Yes.
So let me jump in really quick and make sure that I'm understanding what we're doing. The two motions that Commissioner Luttrell is proposing, those need to be dealt with separately, number one. And so if the motion is for approval directing staff to make the findings, I think that's an appropriate motion. The motion to begin the process of implementing a special use permit, I'm not sure that that's germane for discussion tonight because that's not an agenda item for tonight's meeting. You can certainly ask staff to put that on a future agenda to, to begin that discussion, but it's not something that we can take an, an action on because it's not on the agenda.
That's fine, just so they're linked and so if one goes, then the other will follow.
And they can't be linked. I mean, you're making a decision based on the record tonight.
Very well. In my mind, very good. If this passes, then my next proposal will be for us to put on our agenda special use permit process for fork grounds.
Okay, so we have a motion in favor of the proposal, the special use permit. Do we have a second? Okay, so your motion dies for lack of a second. Does anyone else want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that item SP six 13 be denied and that I direct staff to make the findings.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do we want to give a hint on, on what the findings, what, what, what part of it does this meet? Why are we rejecting it?
I...
It's up to staff.
...made that statement before. I discussed why I'm rejecting it because I don't, I made my statement. And I'm just directing staff to do the findings based on a non-approval.
I'm comfortable that I can capture the gist of your analysis. You've, you've talked about it for a while, so I think I have a sense of where everybody's at.
Very good.
Okay, so any further discussion on, on this motion? All right, Shannon, roll call please.
Hannah Line?
Hannah Line? To deny.
Deny, sorry.
Messina?
Denial.
Luttrell?
Well, the motion is to, can you state the motion?
Hold on a second, there's a motion to deny in a second. Now, she's doing roll call, so if you vote yes, that's gonna be in favor of the motion to deny. So should we start that over again so everybody's clear on this thing, what we're doing? Okay.
Hannah Line?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
No.
Yes.
Okay, so that fails. It wasn't an easy decision, as you can see, but that's denied, SP six dash thirteen. I don't know, does anyone else have anything else they want to say about this or, you know, we've made it clear that we'll offer our services?
I would certainly say that, yes, we can have workshops if they want to. I know that we make a decision and we make friends and we don't make friends and that's just what we're charged for up here and...
But I also think this is an excellent example of why we ask staff to develop the findings because it's very complex.
Okay, I wouldn't mind if somebody made a motion for a five-minute recess while the room clears out and we get ready for the next hearing.
Make a motion for a five-minute recess?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned for five minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order here, Cordeleen Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have one more hearing tonight. The applicant is Lake Forest LLC, location is 1555 West Hanley Avenue. This is a proposed 55-acre annexation from County Agricultural Suburban, and I guess in commercial to City R8 and C17. This is a quasi-judicial A dash one dash fourteen. And the second part of it is a proposed 176-lot preliminary plat called Lake Forest West. It's also quasi-judicial S dash one dash fourteen. I bet you're doing the staff report.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Jordan.
Thank you, Tammy.
So again, tonight, we do have two requests from the applicant, Lake Forest LLC. The first will be the annexation request for zoning prior to annexation for 54.9 acres on the northeast corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. A portion of it is requested to be R8 and then less than three acres of that subject property is requested to be C17. So here's a subject property outlined in the yellow broken line. And this is also the existing city limit line outlined in the red. It also includes this area as far as being outside the city limits right now, but the subject property for tonight's discussion is only this area. So we will go through the findings and we'll look at each one of those as I work through my presentation this evening. And the first one is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive Before I do that, I also wanted to provide a map of some of the zoning that surrounds this property. The area to the north is currently zoned R5. This area is Lake Forest, a few of the subdivisions, that's zoned R12. And as you can see, Cordeleen Place is zoned R8 PUD with some C17 properties zoned to the south of that, excuse me, C17L and C17. And this is the area that they are also proposing to have C17. As far as zoning on the property, we talked about what they're proposing, I've gone through what some of the surrounding zonings are. Land uses in the area include single-family, residential, multifamily. As you can see, this area has the cemetery and some other single families. And it's primarily, as far as the subject property, it's primarily vacant land with tree cover of ponderosa pine and fir trees. So the proposed zoning for the annexation is plus or minus 51.65 acres to be zoned R8 and then the C17 portion is plus or minus three acres on that southern portion. The minimum lot size in the R8 zoning district is 5,500 square feet with 50 feet of frontage on a public street. The maximum lot size proposed, and we'll talk about the subdivision later, is about 18,000 and the minimum lot size is about 7,800 square feet. The next finding is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. This again is the area of request. The comprehensive plan designation for this area is the Ramsey Woodland Boundary. I've included in your staff report significant plan, significant policies on pages eight and nine. So the Ramsey Woodland tomorrow characteristics of the neighborhood are, for the most part, have been established and should be maintained with development in this area and will continue to grow in a stable manner. Lower density zoning districts will intermingle with the existing Cordeleen Place Plan Unit Development, providing a variety of housing types. The northern boundary is the edge of the community, offering opportunities for infill. And one of the characteristics in this Ramsey Woodland neighborhood will be that the overall density may approach three to four residential units per acre. However, pockets of higher density housing and multifamily units are appropriate in the compatible area. And they are proposing a density of about 3.2. You can see this green area is the transition area and that's where the area of request falls into. This is the existing city limit line, the red. And this area is the stable established area in the purple. And again, this dark line is the Ramsey Woodland Boundary. The next finding would be that public facilities and utilities are not available and adequate for the proposed use. I've listed in the staff report the comments from city staff and public utilities and facilities have, there are comments in our staff report with regard to that. They are available or will be available with this proposed annexation. And the last finding is that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. And this is a photo of the site looking northeast. This is a subject property that is very level terrain with no significant topographic features. There is an existing single-family on the site with a few outbuildings that will be That the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood, again, with regard to traffic, neighborhood character and/or existing land use. The subject property is bordered on two sides by major roads that will be able to accommodate traffic generated by a development. At present, the subject property is in transition from agricultural, commercial to primarily residential development as indicated by the preliminary plat that has been submitted in conjunction with this annexation request. As far as existing and surrounding land uses, you can see in the yellow, this is a land use designation for single-family and all of these areas have that designation. We've also got some vacant land around there. And those are all the findings I have. On December 27th, 2013, we mailed 141 notices and there are no conditions on this request. And I'm available for questions if you have any, and the applicant's representative is also here.
Do we have any questions for Tammy? Thank you, Tammy. Okay, who's the applicant? Come on up, state your name and address and I'll swear you in.
Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City of Cordeleen.
Okay, Drew, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Drew, can I interrupt for just a second?
You may.
Ask the chairman a question, see how he wants to proceed. The way we're starting down this road is we're setting up a dynamic where we're gonna have people testifying twice. Do we want to address or take testimony on both items at the same time? Or do we want to essentially work our way, all the way through the annexation request, taking testimony and then have more testimony focused on the subdivision request?
Well, most of the time, we've been able to work these where we have all the testimony kind of at once here, I think.
That's kinda what I was wondering. So if that's your preferred direction, maybe we can have Tammy do the staff report for the subdivision?
I will yield back, Tammy.
And then have the applicant come up and speak to both items, maybe spend some of the time.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
All right, I'll continue on then.
Okay, then.
So with the annexation, we also do have a subdivision request. This is a proposed preliminary plat known as Lake Forest West, which is 176-lot preliminary plat subdivision. Again, it's on the northeast corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. So this request is a request for 175 lots to be zoned R8 and one of those lots, which is 176 lot, to be zoned commercial. And that's the 2.96-acre parcel on the southwest corner of the project. So the overall general information, the subject property is located west of Lake Forest, Fourth, Fifth and Sixth Editions, and it's south of Legacy Place, east of Ramsey Road and north of Hanley. So you guys are familiar with the findings that we'll need to go through, I'll kinda keep this short. So the first finding, that all of the general preliminary plat requirements have or have not been attested to by the city engineer. Gordon Dobler has reviewed the preliminary plat as submitted and it does contain all of the general informations required by Section 16.12.02 over the Municipal Code, general requirements. That the provisions for sidewalk streets, alleys, rights-of-way, easements, streetlighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities and utilities are not adequate. Again, I have comments on pages three through six and I'll briefly go through the comments. First of all, talking about stormwater, city code requires a stormwater management plan to be submitted and that will be submitted with the application. As far as traffic, I'll just discuss the annexation, or excuse me, the evaluation portion. The subject property is bracketed by two major city arterial roadways, north-south Ramsey Road on the west, east-west Hanley Avenue on the south. Bisecting the proposed development will be an extension of Canfield Avenue, which is a major east-west collector roadway. The roadways will make the direct connections to the preliminary, or excuse me, to the primary urban arterial travel ways of US 95 and US 90 that move large volumes of city traffic. In addition, numerous local streets that make the connections with these roadways allow for the rapid dispersion of traffic flows throughout the area. Therefore, based on the availability of the multiple available adjacent and connecting streets, the additional traffic volumes will be accommodated. And that was reported by the city engineer and engineering department. And as far as streets, we've got some information in there talking about 36-foot streets meeting the city standards that would be provided and the extension of Canfield Avenue, which I just discussed. And in summary, the proposed interior streets do meet city standards and the Canfield Avenue extension is proposed to be partially divided by median and contain a traffic circle, not roundabout to serve as a means of calming traffic and speed reduction. And the engineering department reports that the proposed street sections are acceptable as submitted. There are also included in your staff report subdivision improvements that are gonna be required and they are listed. As far as fire protection, the fire department reported that an emergency 20-foot fire department access was shown on the plan and is acceptable to them. That's also listed as a condition as you'll see at the end of my staff report, sufficient water system infrastructure and capacity in the area will provide adequate domestic service and fire flow for the proposed subdivision. And then there is information also included from the wastewater department regarding sewer. And you'll see those three items are also conditions in the end of my staff report. So again, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, it is in the Ramsey Woodland Boundary and the area of request is up on the screen, outlined in the broken line. It is in the transition area and I've included the significant policies in your staff report on pages seven and eight that you might want to provide when you're completing your findings this evening. That the public interest will or will not be served. The subject property is located in the northwestern portion of the city of Cordeleen. It will provide the opportunity for a variety of housing options that are compatible with the existing developments in the area and the proposed subdivision is compatible with the surrounding land use pattern of single-family development. The street layout is compatible also with the existing roads in the area and the proposed plat has a residential develop, excuse me, residential density of 3.17 units per acre. And the next finding, B, that all of the required engineering elements of the preliminary plat have or have not been met and attested to by the city engineer. And Gordon Dobler did review that and indicated that all the subdivision and code design standards and improvement requirements have been met and approved. And the next finding is that the lots proposed in the preliminary plat meet or do not meet the requirements in the applicable zoning district. Lake Forest West preliminary plat is proposed as R8 zoning in conjunction with the annexation request before you tonight. And the lot sizes range from 9,565 to 18,194. Minimum lot size in that R8 zoning district are 5,500 square feet. And I've listed in your staff report the following zoning performance standards and they're required to be met when building permits are issued on each lot. There's a call out regarding deviations in your staff report on the subdivision. Lot frontages on lots that are situated in the knuckles of the development will be required to have a deviation approved to allow the reduction of the frontage for the applicable zoning. So as I mentioned, the R8 zoning district does require 50 feet of frontage on a public street. On these lots situated in the knuckles, as mentioned in the staff report, they are asking for less than that, which would require the deviation. And these have also been approved in other subdivisions through the deviations of standard process. Lots adjoining Ramsey Road, Canfield Avenue and Hanley Avenue, with the exception of Lot 76, which is the request for the commercial zoning or C17, are double-frontage lots. Our code does require the applicant to provide a planting screen and that information is included in your staff report. It's a 10-foot wide planting screen along such traffic arterials, or excuse me, traffic screen, planting screen at least 10 feet wide along the lines abutting the traffic So as far as an evaluation, that information is in your staff report. It summarizes that they're asking for a density of 3.17 units per acre, requesting the R8 zoning district to plat the 176 lots. As far as the zoning, you've got a variety of zoning or, for the most part, single-family type zoning. You've got the R12 zoning district and you've got R5 and R8 zoning district. That the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do or do not meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district. I did talk about the zoning district being R8, the minimum lot size, frontage requirements, and the request for the deviation on the knuckle lots. This is the proposed plat that the applicant has submitted and the engineering department has reviewed that plat. has reviewed that plat. That the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood at this time with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land uses. The subject property is bracketed by two major city arterial roadways, north-south Ramsey Road on the west and east-west Hanley Avenue on the south, bisecting the proposed development with the extension of Canfield Avenue, which is a major east-west collector roadway. The roadways all make direct connections to the preliminary urban arterial travel ways of US 95 and 90 that move large volumes of traffic, of the cities, large volumes of the city's traffic. In addition, the numerous local streets that make the connections with the roadways allow for the rapid dispersion of the traffic flows throughout the area. Therefore, based on the availability of multiple available adjacent and connecting streets, the additional traffic volumes will be accommodated. And this is also a piece out of the comprehensive plan, talking again about the neighborhood character from the land use Ramsey, or excuse me, from the Ramsey Woodland today characteristic. And again, this is a photo of the site, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood at this time. And we talked about traffic and neighborhood character and existing land uses around that And again, the yellow indicates the single family, and as you can see, that's primarily what's around here. And this is the subject property, with the exception of this. So we have several proposed conditions in the staff report on pages 17 and 18. We've got four that are listed by the engineering department. Three proposed conditions from the planning department, and they're primarily dealing with the planting screen that's required. And the fire department proposed a condition, and then the wastewater department also proposed two conditions. And we mailed out 141 notices on December 27, 2014. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
I'll ask you one, Tammy. I don't recall, was there any comment by the parks department? Are they just paying a fee in lieu of parkland on this? I don't see any.
No, I didn't get anything from them on that.
Okay. Well, I guess the code would require that. I don't see any parkland in here.
There was not a proposal for parkland in this area. There will be a park impact fee collected with each lot during development that will be used for parkland acquisition and development.
Right, so they're paying a fee in lieu of... Any questions for Tammy? Okay, thank you, Tammy. You want to come back on down here, Drew? Just state your name and address again.
Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City of Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, and I swear you in already, I think, earlier, so you're all set to go.
Tammy did a great job. She's done, covered most of what I wanted to talk about. This has kind of been a long process for us. We've met with the city staff several times, worked through most of the issues. You have actually two staff reports in front of you, one for the annexation, one for the subdivision. We've gone through those, and we've talked with staff about them, and we don't really have any contention with those. So I'll be brief, because like I said, Tammy's covered most of what I want to talk about. This is the property in question, located at the intersection of Hanley. This is Hanley here and Ramsey. It's approximately 55-acre piece of property. As Tammy had said, this is a picture of your land use map from your comprehensive plan. And the property is an island in the city. It has been for a long time. We think it's a fairly, I don't want to say straightforward annexation, but it is. Because it's an island, it's surrounded by predominantly residential neighborhoods. We've got existing Lake Forest to the east, Legacy Ridge is to the north, Coeur d'Alene Place is obviously to the west. So it seems a natural fit and a natural annexation. I wanted to talk briefly, as Tammy said, there's four findings that you guys need to make in order to approve an annexation. And the first one is, is the annexation in conformance with the comprehensive plan? This is a snapshot directly from your comprehensive plan, which talks about the land use. And as Tammy said, this property is in the Ramsey Woodland land use area. This area, and you can read, I don't need to read it to you, but it's up there. It talks about lower-density housing, which is what we're proposing. We're in the neighborhood of 3.3 units to the acre. It talks about intermingling with the existing Coeur d'Alene Place, PUD, which is zoned R8. We're proposing R8 zoning, so we're in conformance with that. Pedestrian and bicycle trails, it talks about. We will be extending sidewalk and pedestrian access along Ramsey. That's one of the requirements in the staff report, as well as internally in the subdivision, I can talk about that a little bit later, access to the adjoining subdivisions, Legacy Ridge to the north and the existing Lake Forest to the east. Chairman Jordan brought up parks. There are several parks that are located in near proximity to the development. We've chosen to pay park fees in lieu of, in this instance. Neighborhood service nodes where appropriate. Hanley and Ramsey is obviously a major intersection. That's why we've proposed the commercial corner that we have there. It seems to fit well with the uses that are there and the zoning that's there with the new Maverick gas station, and so on and so forth. And the Ramsey Woodland is set up for multifamily and single-family housing. We don't have any multifamily housing proposed with this subdivision. It's strictly single-family. The zoning, and I think this is the same map that Tammy had up, mine's turned sideways north is to the left. The property is surrounded by residential uses, with the exception of the intersection in Hanley and Ramsey. We've got R12 to the, on top, which would be to the east, R12 to the south, R8 in Coeur d'Alene Place across Ramsey, and Legacy Ridge to the north is R5. So the R8 seems to be a natural fit for us. Obviously, the C17 on the corner for the neighborhood service node seems to fit. Jumping into the subdivision a little bit, unless you want me to stop and ask questions about the annexation, or do you want me to keep going with the subdivision?
Well, I don't see any questions yet, so why don't you go ahead and finish that, and then we can just handle all the questions.
As Tammy had said, we're proposing 175 single-family detached homes for average density of about 3.3 units to the acre, average lot size of 95, 65 square feet. The R8 zone allows minimum lot sizes 5,500 square feet. I think our smallest lot is right about 7,000 square feet, with a maximum lot size, as you can see there, over 18,000 square feet. This map shows, and I know it's tough to see up here, but it does show some of the pedestrian and walking trails. This is Hanley right here. There's currently a sidewalk existing in Hanley all the way to the intersection. It stops at the intersection, does not go north in Ramsey. We will be required to put that sidewalk in along Ramsey to the north. One of the other comments from staff during our project review meetings was they wanted access, this is the Legacy Ridge subdivision right here, they wanted pedestrian access to that subdivision. We've provided that here in the form of sidewalk access. And the same thing down here to Hanley, they requested an additional sidewalk access here as well, which we've provided. We've also provided an additional access to Ramsey here. This will serve a dual purpose. One of the fire department's concerns was having a secondary access, and so we've worked this location out with the fire department to provide that secondary access. So that trail will serve dual purposes. It'll be a pedestrian trail, and we'll put bollards, removable bollards on both sides, so the fire department can use that if and when they need to. This is the sewer and water layout, and I apologize for it being tough to see, but in a staff report, there's comments from the water department and the sewer department. There's adequate facilities for both of those utilities, currently extended and stubbed into the property, so there's no issues there. I'll talk briefly about the deviations that Tammy referred to in the knuckles. One of the problems we have, and we have it in a lot of subdivisions, is when you get into knuckle or cul-de-sac situations, it's tough sometimes to meet that 50-foot lot frontage. So this is a blow-up here. Your code 1705-150 for an R8 zone requires 50-foot minimum frontage on a public street. However, it then goes on to say in 06-120 that "street frontages shall be measured at the curb at 26 feet for cul-de-sac and knuckle lots, and a minimum of 40 foot at the setback." And I apologize, these numbers you can't read, but what we're showing is if you extend these lot lines out, this would be the curb line here. We're showing that in this particular instance, this lot would have 37 feet along the curb here, and this one would meet the 26 feet here. But if you go back to the setback line, which would theoretically be the front of the house, it's 55 feet wide here, and then this one, I believe, says 51 feet. So it's more than the minimum, so that the houses do fit. That's the justification and the reason for that deviation in the cul-de-sac and knuckles. And I think we have eight or nine lots in the knuckles that require that deviation. I don't have much more to add. Like I said, everything was covered pretty much in the staff report. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this gentleman?
Can you go back to the whole property, yeah, that? What's the fire route? The fire access?
Right here.
So that's where those...
If they had, the issue is, is technically this part of the subdivision has one access, and that was the fire department's concern. If for some reason this road were to become blocked by an accident, a fire hazard or emergency, the fire department would need, lost my mouse, would need a secondary access to get out of this part of the subdivision. That's what this would serve. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'm not hearing anything else right now. So you'll have some time at the end for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll go down the list here. We'll do public testimony. Let's see. Kirk? Is that Abaliffia? 8137 Stonehaven? Kirk? Don't have Kirk here, all right? Is this Gina Wilson, or? Let's see, Windy Pines Street?
Robert George.
Oh, George, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm not very good at reading sometimes. Would you like to testify?
No.
Okay, thank you. Vance Holly?
No.
Dane and Shay. Oh, Dane, Dane and Shay, no, okay. Bill and Hillary Casely? Okay, neutral. Debbie Bennett, I have you as neutral, but not whether you want to testify? No, okay, thank you. And Aaron Bennett, neutral, don't wish to testify, all right? Let's see, Patrick Martin? You're in favor, do not wish to testify? Marcello Caniglio, excuse me, it's been a long night. Marcello Caniglio, do you want to testify, Marcello?
He did.
Oh, he did? Just state your name and address, sir, and I'll swear you in briefly.
Michael Westray, 1139 West Canfield, Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, sir, and you swear the testimony about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would like to address the extension of Canfield Avenue. And how do I work this thing?
She'll help you there.
I'll take a look at it.
That picture right there.
He'll bring it up on the screen.
My concern is Canfield's only 36 feet wide, parking on both sides. That brings it down to about 22 feet wide. We're going to have a whole lot of extra traffic coming through east and west. The street is not built for that amount of traffic. The way the picture goes, it'll be a straight shot from Ramsey down to 95. My concern is it's going to become a racetrack. We've got the high school on the southwest corner of Ramsey and Hanley, and the kids will be racing down that street, especially if it has a little jog in it like it shows there. I'm also concerned about it becoming a makeshift truck route, because truck drivers, they like to save on fuel, and they won't go around the block if they can go through it. Ramsey is just north of Canfield, and it is a 25 mile an hour zone, and it is a divided highway. However, every year in the winter, at least twice, some fool will come racing through there, spin out, break his wheels off, and roll into the center divider. We've lost light poles to speeding cars. I don't want that to happen in the residential area. What I would like to see, since I'm sure this will go through, is to tee Canfield right here coming west, have traffic diverted north. What did I do? Uh-oh, we're in trouble now. I have trouble with push-button telephones, so bear with me here. Your lifesaver. Yeah, if you could run Canfield north, south, have it come down here, back here to Canfield, don't make this a knuckle, just run this through, and you can run a road, this road out to Ramsey, you wouldn't have fire department driving on a bike trail. And that would alleviate a lot of traffic from Ramsey down to 95, because, you know, if it's a straight shot, they're going to take it, and they're going to speed. And there's stop signs at Canfield and Windy Pines, and down at Pine Grove, and you can sit there all day long and watch cars run through them. They don't stop. I know you can complain to the PD, but, you know, if they're not there, they don't get a ticket. They just run through it. And we get a couple of accidents a year up on Pine Grove and Canfield, and like I said, over on Wilbur, they have a couple of rollovers every year. So even though it's a 25 mile an hour zone, they don't do it. And that's my concern. We have, just on the little street in Canfield where I live, there's 14 houses, there's seven kids, they play in the street, they throw their football back and forth. And I'm just afraid some, with all this traffic, something's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Okay, Sandra Nelson? Have you in opposition, do not wish to testify? Sandra here? Pat Cook? Pat Cook, neutral, do not wish to testify?
I do now.
Oh, you do now? Okay, come on up. Just state your name and address.
My name's Pat Cook, 2534 Windy Pines, which is on the corner of Canfield.
Okay, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have two concerns with the proposal. Like my neighbor, I'm also concerned about the Windy Pines, Canfield going completely through. At this time, the two streets that go through are Wilbur and then Hanley. The traffic from the high school and the new gas station that's now on the corner there is huge. You need a turn signal to get through there. We don't have one. High school kids are maybe not the best at watching to how you move through those lights. By adding another street intersection in between those two, oftentimes when you try to get out of Canfield from the Coeur d'Alene side, you can't get out because the traffic is so blocked up trying to get out, and that's when you're trying to make a right-hand turn into that lane. If you're on the other side and you're adding another through collateral street, which right at this time, Canfield is not, I believe, considered a collateral street because it's broken. It's such a short street, most of the traffic turns on Pine and goes another direction at the stop sign. By making that a through street, I think you're really going to congest Ramsey, and I'd be real interested to see a traffic study that would show how that light system would work if you tried to put another through street, because you would be getting a lot of traffic through that area. My other concern is if you turn that street, maybe one of those walkways, into a street going off either south or north out of that division, and make Canfield a closed area circuit in there. Another concern I have is the, right now, is the amount, if the commissioners have looked at the amount of impact it's going to have on the two school systems there. We're already busing kids out of those schools and how that's going to affect us. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Hilda Catell. Is there a Hilda here? Okay. Then we have Tony Vergier.
He left.
Katie Bane. Is Katie here? Did she leave? Oh, you're here. You're in favor? Okay. You're in favor, do not wish to testify. Okay, Wendy Burley. Is there a Wendy here? Okay. Jeremy Knoll.
In favor.
Okay. Jane Shippers.
In favor.
All right, thank you. Brian Sullivan. Come on up.
Brian Sullivan, 1152 West Sumac.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
And thank you. Again, my name's Brian Sullivan. I am the current president of the Lake Forest Property Owners Association, which is to the east of this proposed subdivision, and could you pull that map up for me?
This one right here.
Yes.
They'll put it up in just a minute.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody's pretty much expressed what our concern is, which is going to be the level of traffic that's added to Canfield. Canfield in our development is houses that are facing the street, unlike Hanley, which, you know, I think has one house that faces the street, and Wilbur has a few. Canfield for us is houses that are all facing the street, and we're just concerned that the way that the, I guess it's the northern fist, all of those houses are going to come out onto Canfield, and I guess there's that concern that, oh, boy, I'm hungry, and I smell shrimp scampi coming from Olive Garden right down the road, so I'm going to floor it and blast through those intersections. I think our board is generally neutral. We realize that, you know, this land's going to be developed, so we're not against it. We just want it to be done in a way that enhances what we already have there and the city as a whole. The main suggestion we have, because I don't know what the name of that north-south street is, but where that intersects with Canfield is pretty close to where Windy Pines intersects with Canfield, and then we have another intersection on the other side of our development, which is at Pine Grove. And I think somebody mentioned a traffic circle, and I'm not sure if that's intended to be it, because it doesn't look like one to me on the drawing, but I think what we would recommend, and I'm not sure if it's in the scope of what you can do, would be that two out of those three intersections become four-way stops. We've got two in ours, and then there's that one. If you make two out of those three four-way stops just to slow people down, we don't want people not to come through our neighborhood, but we just don't want them to be in a rush. We want them to be, we want it to be safe. So that's, I think, our main concern. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and again, you know, we, somebody said 141 notices were sent out. I didn't get one, and I'm not sure how many people did. We have pretty good turnout, I think, but, so we're not sure what's in the scope of what you address and not, but I just want to throw it out there. To our east is the Lake Forest Condominium Association, and we're the Lake Forest Property Owners, and the state already cannot tell the two of us apart. We get each other's mail all the time, so if there's going to be a homeowners association associated with this, probably naming it Lake Forest West so that there's three of us there in the same zip code might cause a, you know, could cause some interesting things. We get a lot of bills that aren't meant for our group, so just something to think about, and I'm not sure if that's a major concern or not, but that's basically all I had, is expressing the same concerns everybody else had about the traffic level that's going to be on Canfield as a result of this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, then I have Tammy, is it Tammy Mayo? And we have Tammy on North Windy Pines Court. Is there a Tammy here? All right, I think that's my list. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Okay, come on up, ma'am, just state your name and address there.
Good evening. I'm Rita Rayholy. I live at 1152 West Canfield, Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, Rita, and do you swear the testimony, you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
My husband and I currently live on the third house from the stop sign on Canfield in our subdivision. At that, at Canfield, perhaps some of you know, the majority of it coming forward is industrial property, doctor's offices, that type of thing, and the mining company's main offices. At the corner of Canfield and Pine Grove, there is currently a stop sign, but it's only for one direction. Instead of having a four-way stop sign there, we just have a one-stop sign. That's being buzzed through all the time, and I'm afraid that if you so decide to make Canfield go all the way through, just going to be nothing but problems. I would like to suggest, I don't know if it's in the realm of this or not, but once the subdivision is in, and if Canfield does go through, then a traffic light should be put on the corner of Ramsey and Pine Grove, and a four-way stop sign at Canfield. Once again, I'd like to reiterate that our houses all do face the road, and we have a lot of speeders going through there now. Also, I think that the property in the new area should go directly across without those little knobs, and make those roads go straight across so that the fire department can get into that subdivision easier. And I also agree that there should be a name change. It's horribly confusing with as many property associations as we currently have with the same name. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to testify?
My name is William Casely. My address is 6876 North Windy Pines.
Okay, sir. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to mention a fact that Lake Forest Homeowners Association, or Lake Forest Property Owners Association, consists of 129 homes, and we feed out to Silver Lake Mall and that area through Canfield, through Sycamore, and through Sumac. So we have three entrances for 129 homes. If we add on 176, the traffic pattern is going to increase significantly, because they only have Canfield to get down to Silver Lake Mall. Okay? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to testify? Is that everybody? Okay. All right, Drew, I guess, come on back down.
Again, for the record, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering. I'm sensing a common theme here with traffic in Canfield. If I could pull my drawing back up here. I can tell you this, traffic is a valid concern. It's been a valid concern of ours from the get-go. We've had lengthy conversations with Gordon in particular and his staff about Canfield and how we route that around. The transportation master plan classifies Canfield as an east-west collector street. It shows it going through from 95 all the way to Ramsey. It's part of the transportation plan. That's something that's required by staff for Canfield to come through. Rerouting that and moving it to the north, I don't think is an option. Canfield does align, this is Canfield here to the west as it goes into Coeur d'Alene Place. That's why this street kind of jogs down to line up with Canfield to the west. That was a requirement of staff to extend that through. With that being said, like I said, we've had extensive conversations with Gordon and his staff about how do we slow traffic down? How do we prevent people from making that a speedway and so on and so forth? Some of the things we're doing, and as Tammy had mentioned, we've talked about putting a traffic circle at this intersection. A traffic circle is more or less a miniature roundabout. It's not the size of the one at Fourth Street and Kathleen, for example, but it's got a smaller center island to prevent people from zipping through. It's been proven to be a little bit more effective than a four-way stop sign because it does allow traffic to continue to flow through and not have everybody stopped. I've talked with Gordon about the city possibly, as Canfield does come down, as some of the people had mentioned about adding additional stop signs or making some of those intersections four-way intersections, and Gordon's considering that as a possibility. I wish he would have stuck around tonight because he could have testified to that, but I can assure you, we've had those conversations with him. Another thing we're doing on Canfield, and it's, you can kind of see it on this picture here, we're proposing Canfield to be a split median boulevard, which means you'll have one lane going in each direction with a center median in the middle, and narrower lanes, which tends to slow traffic down as well, because the lanes aren't so wide, you don't have people speeding through. I think that addresses the issues with Canfield, unless you guys have any more questions about that.
Will it be parking on Canfield? Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? You anticipated my question about if you'd had any discussion with engineering about, yeah, some traffic calming. It's an interesting plat design you have there. It's kind of a little bit of everything, the way the street design is there. Okay, do we have any discussion, questions for staff or anything?
Mr. Chair, I have two questions, quick questions for staff. Will there be a stoplight at Canfield and Ramsey?
There's not one called for at this point.
Pardon me?
No.
Okay. What is the requirement for open space areas for a 55-acre parcel, something like this?
There is no requirement for open space. The applicant is free to donate real estate if they want to do parks. If they don't, the requirement is that they pay essentially $750, I believe, that's the current fee, towards parkland acquisition and development with each building permit that's issued. So then that money goes towards acquiring and building parks that service the area.
You have the Parks Foundation out there in some fashion, it can work with a property owner, if the property owner, if Parks Foundation just hold desires.
Yeah, that's directly from the City of the Parks Foundation, is a little more broad in their mission. They're really aimed at acquiring and developing for the area, but through the city, they are required to make the impact fee payment per lot, and then we, like I said, we spend that money developing and/or acquiring parkland.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. The preliminary plat map is too small to see. Which end will Phase One be? To the south or to the east or maybe to the west? I'm not sure which way it'll start. Can you see that? Meaning, would it come in with Canfield starting it and/or maybe from the south off of Hanley?
So Phase One, I haven't quite located my map, but is just starting on the north portion of Canfield.
Would you like to call the applicant back to explain his phasing plan?
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Let's reopen testimony and have him come back down. Just state your name and address again at the podium there.
Okay.
Drew Dittman, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City Coeur d'Alene. These heavy black lines that you see here represent the different phases. So Phase One would be this area right here. So Canfield will go through with Phase One. Right there. Phase One, I believe, has 43 lots proposed with it.
And what happens next?
Phase Two is this area here.
Okay.
Phase Three to the north, and then work our way towards the south.
I have a question, maybe this is more directed at staff. The letter from the school district, did you guys see that? How does that trigger the whole school district system? Or does it not, or?
I've not seen the letter, so I'm not sure I can answer your question. Let me look at it real quick while you're here.
Well, they're talking about how it might necessitate the need for another elementary
I would imagine the phased approach to their construction, the school district could manage through this possibly, but it's got some interesting numbers, and it has a pretty broad effect to the three schools in the area.
I was curious whether they own any more property out there anywhere.
The interesting thing is that planning for their long-range development and planning for new schools, that falls within their jurisdiction. It's not something that we typically get involved in at all. I appreciate the school district's concern that this may cause them to have to look at expanding their schools, but where their comments are taken into account is as we're developing our comprehensive plan, one of the things that we have to do, we're required to reach out to the school districts and solicit their input. In doing that, we're developing a longer-range plan for how we're going to grow, and those numbers essentially drive, as we're approving subdivisions or as we're growing, we're shooting at the numbers we put in our comprehensive plan, which they've had input into. And so that's where their comments are taken into account and trying to address their concerns, so that they're in a position... concerns, so that they're in a position to long-range look at our comprehensive plan and see what the growth patterns are gonna look like, so they can then be planning to grow and address the growth that's coming to the area. So they're right, this may cause them to look at growth, but that should've been part of their planning all along, because that's part of the comprehensive planning that they participated in all along.
Thank you.
All the applicants up here in the area, do we have any more questions for him? Okay, I guess you're released. Thank you.
A quick question on truck traffic on Canfield. We had one development in this general area where the people came, were concerned about trucks going through, and I think we were able to do something to discourage trucks. And I don't know what, is there something we can do to encourage non-usage of that by large trucks?
Trucks are essentially required to use designated truck routes, my guess is this would not be one of the truck routes, so generically speaking, it would be a violation of the code for trucks to consistently use this as a thoroughfare. They certainly would be able to use it for deliveries, for local access, loading, all of this sort of local stuff, that would still be free for use by large trucks, but generically speaking, trucks are limited to the truck lanes. If it needed to be designated differently, that's a council function through an ordinance change.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Yeah, I'll ask you a quick question while, while somebody's formulating a motion. We can also add on a finding to suggest engineering look at some traffic calming devices onto the motion, correct?
A finding or a condition?
Well, I thought it had to be a finding, can it be a condition, or?
The findings that you need to make are the ones contained in your worksheet.
Well, I'm trying to think of the right term for it, maybe it's a condition, but I don't know if it's necessarily a condition on this. Maybe it is, I'm just thinking of having, you know, expressing, I think there's some concern on the commission here, and expressing our concern to the engineering department about doing some traffic calming types of things on Canfield there. You know, we heard about the developers opened a traffic circle, or four-way stop, it sounded like you preferred a traffic circle, and maybe doing one or two more four-way stops farther to the east on Canfield there. So I think that's something they should look at.
I believe that the staff report speaks to that being on the radar already, I think you're certainly free, looking through the conditions, it does not appear that there's a condition speaking to the implementation of a traffic circle, but it is in the evaluation of the staff comments for traffic flow, so if you wanted to reduce that to a condition, I think that you could.
I think it wouldn't hurt to highlight it. And they'll know that it was a concern of ours then, if that's the opinion of everybody.
It certainly is with me.
Is anybody ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
Of course, we could always have staff do the findings.
Findings? Which one's? You can do one?
You can do both of them if you wanna do them, I'll help you out.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this matter coming before the planning commission on January 14th, 2014, and there being present a person requesting approval of item A-1-14, a request for zoning prior to annexation from county agricultural suburban and commercial to city R8 residential at eight units per acre, and C17 commercial at 17 units per acre for the 54.9 acres. The applicant is Lake Forest LLC, the location is 54.9 acres on the northeast corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. Is this where I can have you guys do the findings, or do I need to read through all these?
No, that's sufficient, if your motion is for approval, you can direct staff to prepare findings of approval consistent with your deliberation.
And have staff prepare findings?
Yeah, and on this one, I don't believe there was any conditions on the annexation, that would be inappropriate. The next one on your motion to approve the subdivision, you would want to reference the applicable conditions that you feel are warranted.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a second on that one? Second by Luttrell. All right, any discussion? Okay, Shanna?
Hannah Line?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
All right, so that passes unanimously. So now we're looking for a motion on the subdivision, preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this matter having coming before the planning commission on January 14th, 2014, and there being present a person requesting approval of item S-1-14, a request for preliminary plat approval of Lake Forest West, 176 lot subdivision. The applicant is Lake Forest LLC, the location is 54.9 acres on the northeast corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. I'd like to direct staff to include the findings, and I gotta find the conditions.
So the proposed conditions are on page four, there is the two, four proposed conditions.
I got 17 and 18.
I'm looking at the findings worksheet, has it been?
Proposed conditions on page 17 and 18, the numbers one through 10?
Yeah.
And then you mentioned something about the traffic?
You could add a condition about the engineering department analyzing Canfield Avenue and, you know?
Further look at traffic patterns.
Yeah, for traffic calming devices to stop that so it's not so much of a thoroughfare, however the...
Primarily for traffic calming in some ways.
Traffic calming, yeah, right, for traffic, analyze that for some traffic calming devices.
Do I need to cite that?
So your additional proposed condition is for the installation of a traffic circle?
I...
I don't know how specific we wanna get, you're the maker of the motion.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have the city engineer and the applicant just review the traffic patterns to possibly look at some other solutions to slow down the concerns of the folks that testified today.
On Canfield.
On Canfield.
You can see a couple options could be such as traffic circles or four-way stops.
And perhaps, yeah, four-way stops.
A couple examples would be four-way stops.
Along Pine Grove, perhaps, in Canfield.
Pine Grove.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Shanna, roll call.
Hannah Line?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimous. S-1-14. All right, I think we're ready for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, we're adjourned.